Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call to order today's Thursday, June 28th, Missoula County Commissioner Meeting. And if you would join me in standing and say in this Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, do we have any public announcements from staff? I guess the one thing that I would mention is that on Monday, July 9th, we will be having at 9:00 a.m. in the morning in this very room, a special public hearing, public meeting, on the subject of potentially putting on the November ballot and open space bond for Missoula County. So, 9:00 a.m., July 9th here. Anything else?
Even though it's not the grand opening of the park, because it's been delayed because of rain and other things, on tomorrow night at 6:00, there's softball tournaments at the new Fort Missoula Regional Park.
Very good. Without further ado, is there any public comment on items not on today's agenda? And we have a number of public hearings today, so if there's anything folks would like to weigh in on outside of the agenda items, now is your chance. Seeing none, our current claims list, received by the Commissioner's Office from June 11th through June 22nd, 2018, totaled $6,259,495.88. And as I've said before, if folks are interested in drilling down into what specific items add up to that amount, if you go to the electronic version of today's agenda, there's a link that will allow you to do so. And please sign in in the back of the room if you haven't done so already, so we know who is here. So with that, we'll begin and open our first public hearing today. This is a public hearing on the proposed Anthony DeBrito family transfer, and we have a staff report from Lauren Miller.
Thank you. Lauren Miller, Planner with Community and Planning Services. This is a request from Anthony DeBrito to utilize the family transfer exemption to create and transfer two tracts to his daughters. Here's a view of the property. It's located southeast of Lolo off of Expedition Drive. The current lot is approximately three acres in size and is unzoned. The property is within the 2002 Lolo Regional Plan, which designates this parcel as six dwelling units per acre. The proposal we're looking at today does not exceed that recommended density. It's not shown here on the aerial imagery, but there is one existing single-family residence on the property that was built in 2017. Here's the existing tract of record. The proposal is on tract A1. The COS was created by a court-ordered split in 2012. Here's the proposed parcel layout provided by the applicant. The result of the family transfer will be three tracts in total, each approximately one acre in size. Access to the tracts will be provided off of Expedition Drive. The applicant has stated that the tracts will be used for residential purposes. The rebuttable presumptions and general evasion criteria were reviewed in the staff analysis for the proposal. A couple of those rebuttable presumptions and general evasion criteria were applicable that the staff noted in bold in the report. The rebuttable presumption triggered by this application was if a transfer of a tract of land by one family member to another by quitclaim deed is followed by an attempted use of this exemption on the same tract. Anthony DeBrito and Trish Markham transferred the tract to singular ownership of Anthony DeBrito in May of 2018. The second rebuttable presumption triggered was if the division appears to be made for the purpose of speculation by the landowner or for resale for the benefit of the landowner by using the grantee as a straw person. This may be indicated if the grantor and/or recipient own other tracts of land in Missoula County, or it is evident that the receiving family members do not intend to reside on the family transfer tract. Anthony DeBrito owns two other tracts of land in Missoula County, according to the Missoula County Property Information System. The general evasion criteria triggered by the application that were noted by staff was if the claimant was in the business of construction or dividing, developing, or selling land. The application did indicate that Anthony DeBrito is the owner of Sun Peak Construction and is a custom home builder. Anthony DeBrito's company, Sun Peak Construction, was listed as the contractor for a land-use permit for that home on the property that was applied for Missoula County on January 4th of 2017. That permit was issued on January 30th of 2017. The second general evasion criteria was if the original tract was transferred to the claimant within the past two years. The property was transferred to Anthony DeBrito in March of 2017. The tract also does share a common road with a nearby platted subdivision and shares a similar acreage to the adjacent Veal subdivision. The final general evasion criteria triggered with the application was if the proposal is brought forth as a minor subdivision, conditions may be imposed relative to the subdivision's impact on public health, agricultural, the natural environment, and wildlife. Further review would be needed in order to determine whether these impacts are significant. Staff is recommending that the request by Anthony DeBrito to create and transfer two parcels to his daughters Hunter Dottie and Hudson DeBrito be approved. And I have a few questions for the applicant if he would like to come forward.
Mr. DeBrito, come on up to the mic. And yeah, it looks like your red button's on. If you could hit the activate switch to turn it to green. Perfect, thank you.
All right. And if you just want to state your name for the record?
Anthony DeBrito.
Did you buy the property with the intent of dividing it?
No.
Did you or your transferees intend to transfer the property within the next year?
No.
Have you talked to anyone at the county about going through subdivision review?
No.
Will the property be developed?
Yes.
And will the recipients of the property be residing on the property?
Yeah.
Okay. That's all my questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. DeBrito, do you have anything else you'd like to add at this time?
Nope.
Okay. Hang on just a minute. Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff or Mr. DeBrito?
So, Mr. DeBrito, it says that you got a land-use permit in January of last year. Was that to build the house that's there?
Yes.
Okay. And do you live there?
Yes.
In that house?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. That's my only question.
Cola? Okay. Thank you very much. Is there any public comment? This is a public hearing. Any public comment on the proposed family transfer? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Motion or further discussion?
Sure. I would move that the Board of County Commissioners approve the request by Anthony DeBrito to utilize the family transfer exemption to create two parcels to transfer to his daughters, Hunter and Hudson, as presented in the application.
Second.
Is there any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. That passes. So what are Mr. DeBrito's next steps?
So you'll get a letter from us of the approval, and that you will need to submit to the clerk and recording office, the official survey.
Okay. Thank you. Do you want me to push this?
Thank you.
Either way, you can leave it on if you want. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Next to bat, I will open up a public hearing on West Point Phase 1 subdivision agreements. We have a staff report from Jamie Erbacher.
John Hart.
John Hart, okay. You're throwing me off here.
I'm gonna handle this one. Yeah, for the record, I'm John Hart. I'm a deputy county attorney. And I often bring these improvements agreements to you guys at your admin meetings, but we're bringing this one to you at this public meeting because there is another issue. There's a...
Plat adjustment.
Plat adjustment. There you go. Thank you, Jamie. There's a plat adjustment that follows this. So we thought we'd dovetail these together and get you fully up to speed on Phase 1 of West Point. I want to give you a little bit of background, because this is not an ordinary improvements agreement, so bear with me on that. The Phase 1 of West Point subdivision was given preliminary plat approval in May of 2001. Many of the improvements were installed in the west half of Phase 1 between 2001 and 2003. And then in March of 2004, the final plat for Phase 1 was recorded. And that was recorded after an improvements agreement had been approved by the board in order to guarantee that the remaining infrastructure in the east half of West Point Phase 1 would be installed in the future. Between 2004 and 2012, the mistakes were made, a foreclosure occurred, and unfortunately, the required improvements in Phase 1 were not installed. And that left Missoula County in a position not unlike Glen Eagle. Fortunately, in 2015, Circle H Investments LLC purchased the subdivision from the bank that had foreclosed on the subdivision, including all of the lots in Phase 1. And in July of 2016, Missoula County and Circle H entered into an improvements agreement and a subordination agreement to secure that the remaining infrastructure in Phase 1 would be installed. The terms of that improvement agreement were exactly the same as the terms that were entered into by the parties in 2004. That improvements agreement has now expired, and we need to enter another one. The one that you have in front of you today, this improvements agreement and subordination agreement are exactly the same substantively as the one that just expired and the one that the county agreed to in 2004, except that the one that you have in front of you today allows the developer three years instead of two years to install the required infrastructure. What is unique about this improvements agreement over the ones that I very commonly bring to you is that rather than having a letter of credit from a financial institution to secure the obligation to install the infrastructure, this improvements agreement has placed 30 lots in escrow that Missoula County has a lien on. So it's a property escrow security rather than a letter of credit security interest. And again, the lots that the developer has encumbered and given Missoula County a first lien on are lots 34A through 43C. The developer has warranted that these lots exceed $962,000, which is the estimate of the cost of the remaining infrastructure. First American title is the trustee. They're the ones that are holding the deeds in trust. The way this works is, as the developer sells these lots, $39,000 from the sale of each lot goes into a financial account, and that money can only be used for putting in infrastructure. And as money from each lot is deposited, then Missoula County releases the lien that it has on that particular lot until there's enough money in the account to install some or all of the infrastructure. I want to be candid with you that a property escrow arrangement like this is a little bit more risky than a letter of credit. Some of these things may be obvious, but let me just say that, you know, with a letter of credit, you know exactly how much money there is going to be to call on. You know, you have an estimate from an engineer of the cost of the remaining infrastructure. You require the developer to get a letter of credit for exactly that amount of money. Here, the developers put up 30 lots, and we haven't done an appraisal on those lots. So we sort of have to... I mean, there's some leap of faith here in terms of, is there enough security to actually install this infrastructure? And having put up 30 lots, the estimate for the remaining infrastructure being $962,000, you know, that is approximately... We would need to be able to get about $32,000 per lot in order to get the amount of money necessary to put in that infrastructure. We haven't done... Again, we haven't done an appraisal on these lots, and we're taking the developer at his word that he's put in this agreement, that he's warranted that these lots are worth more than that. The second issue with a property escrow arrangement like this is the marketability or liquidity of these lots. With a letter of credit, of course, you know, you call up the bank, you write the bank, you tell them the facts and circumstances, you get the money. Here, we get lots that then, in order to turn into money, we've got to be able to sell. And we all know that that can be problematic. And these are unimproved lots, so there's, you know, they may be even less marketable than improved lots. And there's also often a problem where the property that you're taking in escrow is already encumbered. There's already liens against the property. In this case, that problem has been resolved. There are... The developer has used these lots as security in the past, and there's a company, Boulder Creek Investments, that's loaned a substantial amount of money on these lots. And so Boulder Creek Investments has given Missoula County a subordination agreement, saying that we will subordinate our security interest to your interest that is being given to guarantee the infrastructure. So that third risk has been eliminated by the subordination agreement. And that's the second agreement that you have in front of you today. There's an improvements agreement and a subordination agreement, and it would be my recommendation to you that Missoula County enter into both of those agreements. They're exactly the same terms that we entered into in July of 2016. And it's my professional opinion, it's the right thing to do for Missoula County, to continue to give Circle H Investments an opportunity to try to make the best of West Point subdivision and Phase 1. And so that's the end of my speech. I'm happy to answer any questions. I know that Nick Kaufman is here too, on behalf of the developer, and there may be information that Nick wants to correct that I've said or expand upon. I don't know.
Mr. Kaufman, do you have anything you want to add now?
Only to answer specific questions the commission may have. Thanks, Dave.
Okay. Thank you. And this is a public hearing. Is there any public comment on this particular item? Okay. I will close the public hearing. Questions from the commission? Commissioner Curtis?
So both the agreements are in this packet?
They should be.
And the next one is a whole separate item, right? Number three is a separate item? That's the plat?
That's the plat adjustment. Yeah, that Jamie's going to be handling. You should have in front of you a document called Subdivision Improvements Agreement and Guarantee, West Point Phase 1. That's been signed by Mark Barretts on June 7th. That's a three-page document, along with the cost estimate that's been approved by our Public Works Department. And then there's a second agreement called the Subordination Agreement.
Does the subordination agreement... It puts us in first position, but the other party still has... If the lot was sold, if we had to take the lot in payment, and the lot was sold, all the money would not go to Missoula County, right?
$39,000 of it would go to Missoula County. The remainder, if the lot sells for more than $39,000, the remainder would go to the subordinate Boulder Creek Investment, I believe.
So they're taking the biggest risk, because we get first east?
Correct. We get our $39,000 first.
Nick, it looked like you might have something to add, or are you just stretching your legs? Okay.
I think what John said is accurate, but you have to go back into historical perspective and then look at what you have in front of you today. At the time that Circle H Ranch in West Point came into Missoula County, they met an awful lot of the goals and objectives of the growth policies in the community at that time. It was a very well-designed subdivision in a lot of different ways, and I've talked to you all about that. At that time, the subdivision regulations allowed deeds for lots to be used, to be put in escrow and used as an improvement guarantee. Since that time, the subdivision regulations have changed. So those lots were in place in the escrow account, waiting for someone to either put in improvements and release those lots back to the developer, right? Or not do the improvements and have Missoula County take those lots, turn them into value, and put the improvements in. That was all in place. As John stated, there were some things beyond his control and my control, and especially my client's control, that happened, that we got together as a team, the developer and Missoula County, to rectify, right? And we reinstated the improvement guarantees for the second half of West Point, all right? Now, those improvement guarantees are good for two or three years, under state law, right? And we're giving an extension to West Point. You extended the plat here just a while ago. And then this is the improvement guarantee extension that goes along with that. So what we've done is to reinstate everything that was there before, under the subdivision regulations in place at that time, right? And we're asking you to extend what you did in 2016 for three years for us.
So I guess a question for either of you gentlemen. So why would we take this on faith, as far as the appraised value, without having done an appraisal? Having gotten burned and had to pay out significantly in the past for things that have gone awry, I'm a little concerned that we don't have a firm grasp on what the value is. Mr. Hart and/or Mr. Kaufman?
I can say that, just like Mr. Kaufman was... He gave a little bit of the historical perspective there. To rectify some of the problems that occurred between 2004 and 2012, and it's true, some of those were beyond his control and the county's control, the agreement that was reached is that Missoula County would accept an improvements agreement under the same terms as they had accepted in 2004. And what I don't know, and what maybe Nick knows, is what some of these lots are selling for. If they're selling for more than $33,000, then we have a pretty good sense of our security. I don't know.
So affordable workforce housing lots in Missoula County... So commissioners, understand that we can't put an affordable workforce, single-family home. The production function for that home is an expenditure of about $300,000. You can't sell them for $300,000, because you need to make a profit on that, all right? So the market rate lots in Missoula County from Lloyd Twykes Project up in the South Hills, through 44 Ranch, and a subdivision like West Point are about $80,000 to $85,000 bucks. That's the value of the lot. These lots are designed a little narrower, and so they're about less than a half the width of a normal lot, because they're designed for townhomes. So the infrastructure costs per lot are about half of what they would be in a normal subdivision. In a normal subdivision, the infrastructure improvements would be about $35,000 to $36,000 a lot. That's what they are in 44 Ranch, to use as an example. So if you take these to about $35,000 from about $80,000, you've got about a $54,000 value there, when the improvement guarantee needs about $39,000.
Okay, thanks. Cola?
I have a stupid question.
There are stupid questions.
These lots go into an escrow, and when someone pays it, that money goes into an account, and it has to build up a certain dollar amount in order to put in the infrastructure, right? Because, I mean, like, say I'm one person, and I buy a lot way at the end of the road, and none of the other lots sell, and what I put in there isn't enough money to put in any infrastructure? Does that person eventually just give up and get their money back?
So we can't do that. Let me see if I understand the question.
It's probably too stupid for you to understand, but...
No, it's a good question.
Yeah. So if I have a filed subdivision, right, and the improvements have not been installed, all right, and I go down and buy the last lot, okay? I can't really get a deed for that lot until we have the improvements in. That my money that I pay for that lot stays in escrow until those improvements go in. So there's no way for a person to occupy a lot and not have improvements, if that's the question, Commissioner.
Yeah. So that person has to just sit there, having purchased the lot, but they can't build on it for an undetermined amount of time until a critical mass of lots have sold to be able to fund the infrastructure improvements? Is there any stopgap in place ever that that person needs to be able to occupy that, or they can't afford to hold the lot? You know what I mean? Like that they can get out of it if five years later they still don't have?
That's the marketplace. I mean, that's the marketplace. So the plan for this one would be is that the owner of the property is developing the lots, all right? So Clearwater Development Company is the one who's building the homes. We'll hear more about that in the next item. And they're doing pretty well right now, and they're putting up some good homes. Our plan is, is that in this market, we will go through Phase 1, we'll put the improvements in in Phase 2, you'll return the lots that are in escrow to us, and we'll sell property, in that order.
Okay. Any other questions? John, you're just getting ready. Okay.
No, I don't have anything to add.
Okay. Thank you. All right. We've got a public hearing. Is there a motion?
I concur with Dave that we don't like being in the business of acquiring lots and land. It hasn't gone particularly well for us. But in this case, I do think the historical perspective is important, and it's something that I think is a really good, important project that we should continue to support. So I would move to approve the subdivision improvements agreement and guarantee and subordination agreement for West Point Phase 1.
One second, and I'd like to speak to the motion.
Sure.
I agree. We got burned with really hot fires on these kinds of things, so I am very hopeful. I will vote in favor, but I'm very hopeful that they are successful.
Yes, I concur, and I would say without the historical precedent of how we got to where we are today, I don't think I would be inclined to... Well, and in fact, maybe we cannot, by virtue of our current subdivision regulations, go down the path of an agreement like this, short of a letter of credit. So in any event, all those in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. That passes. So we move on to our second West Point item. This is for a final plat adjustment, and I think indeed this is Jamie Erbacher's staff report. Thanks.
Thanks, Dave. All right. So on April 26th of 2018, CAPS received a request for a final plat adjustment for properties legally described as Lot 24 of West Point Phase 1, addressed to 6661 Patent Court and the Common Area of West Point Phase 1. This request would shift the boundary between Lot 24 and the large common area adjacent to the property. So this is in the part where the improvements have already been made, so we're good there. These properties are located off I-90 and accessed off of Butler Creek Road. Once in the subdivision, both the common area and Lot 24 can be accessed off of Patent Court. The subdivision is south of Circle H Ranch and north of the property is accessed off of Gooden Lane and Keel Loop. West Point subdivision was approved in 2001, as John had mentioned. The subdivision cons... The subdivision consists of 240 lots on 72.95 acres. The subdivision and zoning were done in conjunction with the Circle H Ranch development to the north, which together totaled the planned development area of 972 acres. The planned development clustered home sites resulting in large contiguous open space areas. Over the years, several extensions and phasing plan amendments have been granted, which also have resulted in a few condition modifications. The most recent phasing plan extension was granted in April of 2018. This extended the preliminary plat deadlines for Phases Four and Five to 2021. As part of the original subdivision, 11% common area dedication was required with each phase of the subdivision. Phase One includes 9.09 acres of allotted area, 10.63 acres of common area, and 4.98 acres of streets, for a total of 24.70 acres. The dedicated common area with Phase One amounts to 43% of the subdivided area. So now moving on to the specifics of this request. This subdivision, when approved, was zoned East Butler Creek Foothills, Rural Special Zoning District Modified, which allows areas within the sub-district C to be 3,400 square feet for detached dwellings. This request will only modify the boundary between Lot 24 and that common area. It will not affect any land outside of the subdivision or any other lot within the subdivision. The existing common area adjacent to Lot 24 is 9.05 acres, and Lot 24 is 4,867 square feet. As I previously mentioned, the allotted common area well exceeds the required 11% dedication, and since the adjustment will increase the square footage of Lot 24, compliance with the zoning and subdivision regulations will still be maintained. The request is also, will also maintain compliance with the growth policy and the 1997 Butler Creek Area Plan. Patent Court consists of 15 lots. All of these lots have existing homes on them or homes that are under construction, with the exception of Lots 31, 32, 19, 20, and 24. Lots 31, 32, and 20 are all rectangular in shape and do not appear to have any land constraints. Lot 19 is unique in shape, however, the architect has been working on house plans for this lot. Lot 24 is also unique in shape, and that is the only lot on the cul-de-sac out of Lots 23 through 28 that do not have a parallel lot line to the common area. Rather, the rear lot line on Lot 24 bears a distance of 18.53 feet, and then angles slightly north, continuing for another 66.05 feet. The specific reason for this request is to allow a home to be built on Lot 24 that will be similar in design to those existing and proposed with regards to overall shape and square footage. To avoid noncompliance with the zoning, and rather than asking for a variance from the Board of Adjustment, the applicant has opted to apply for a plat adjustment. So if we look at their proposed lot configuration, we can see the adjusted boundary. This adjustment will reduce the common area by 659 square feet, or approximately 0.2% of the existing common area and 0.01% of the total subdivided area. The connectivity between the common area will not be segregated by this proposal. The 659 square feet of land is at a similar slope to that of Lot 24, and therefore is considered buildable. The proposed adjustment will have no effect on the Trails Plan as approved by the Commissioners on December 18th of 2016, or excuse me, of 2006. No other conditions were found to conflict with the proposed amendment. Impacts to wildlife were mitigated by the use of common areas. Lot 24 is on the southwest end of the common area, where the common area is at its narrowest already. The proposed adjustment will not create a narrower connection from the common area fronting on MacArthur Drive than would already exist between Lot 6C and Lot 23. The developer for West Point has stated that this is the only boundary adjustment proposed by his group, and therefore should not be seen as a series of adjustments that would be proposed with this subdivision. So just a quick review and update on the process for final plat adjustments. In November of 2016, the Commissioners adopted a new process for adjustments to file plats and related documents. The reason for this adjustment was to allow for public comment and provide input on these types of requests. So as required, we ran an ad in The Missoulian, sent certified notification to all property owners within 300 feet, and sent out for agency comment. The rest of the process requires review and approval by the Planning Board and the Commissioners under the criteria, Section 6.6.4 of the subdivision regulations. These criteria include that the requested changes are minor in nature, that the changes comply with the regulations, and that they will not reduce the protections or safeguards provided by the subdivision regulations. No new impacts can be created, and the changes shall be consistent with the growth policy and the findings of fact and conclusions of law adopted with the subdivision. The request shall not be considered a series of incremental requests, and changes to the subdivided area shall be considered. However, economic changes should not be taken into consideration. When we solicited for agency comment, we only received two responses. One from County Parks, Trails, and Open Space, and the other from Public Works, neither of which had concerns with the request. We did not receive any comment from the public. However, we did receive two letters returned undeliverable. This proposal went to Planning Board on June 5th. Planning Board had very little discussion on the request and only asked for clarification as to why this was necessary. Staff just reiterated that the applicant, in order to comply with setbacks for the zoning for their model home that they were proposing, they would either have to go through this process or through a variance to the Board of Adjustment, and they opted with this process instead. In the end, the Planning Board recommended approval of the request, and staff is also recommending approval based on the findings of fact contained in the staff report that I just went over, public testimony, and written comments.
Thank you. Mr. Kaufman, as the applicant's rep, would you like to add anything?
Thank heavens for West Point. I wouldn't have a job, I'd have to figure out what to do. I'm especially nervous today when I come up to the podium. I think it's because I'm between two attorneys, but I'm not sure what's causing the energy there. Dave, when we came in for our first plat extension, you asked me a question. You said, you know, according to legislative intent, how many extensions can we give to plats, right? And so what we're asking for today is a boundary relocation. And the subdivision is a true cluster development. We have 35 acres of common area and only 25 acres of lots. And so we're taking a small part of this for a boundary line adjustment because the lot dives off so we can build a home on it. We appreciate your patience. But there's another reason why I'm passionate about West Point and Circle H. And back at the time, we did this subdivision. We had full agency participation in our work, and that includes Fish Wildlife and Parks. And while Fish Wildlife and Parks over the years have declined to participate sort of on a decrescendo, if their participation was here back in 2001, what I learned on Monday, it's clear down here. And it makes designers like WGM Group and the other professional firms, it makes it very difficult for us to design subdivisions like Circle H and West Point, and we don't have that input, right? And so I wanted to show you just an example of Circle H Ranch in terms of when we were able to get information from Fish Wildlife and Parks, so we'd look at primary elk habitat and secondary elk habitat and be able to design around that information that we got. I can't imagine trying to do a subdivision of Missoula County today without that information. And I think it ties the hands of staff in terms of reviewing a subdivision. I think it ties the hands of the person who's trying to develop. So we were fortunate when we did Circle H and West Point that we had that information and were able to incorporate it into the design. Thank you.
Thank you, and believe me, I think we share your frustration and some of the lack of participation by Fish Wildlife and Parks on some of these proposals, which at least partially might be a result of short staffing in their office, but maybe there are other factors also. This is a public hearing. Is there any public comment on this particular item? Boundary line adjustment. Okay, seeing that, I'll close the public hearing. Is there, are there any questions from the Commission or a motion?
I would move that the final plat adjustment request for West Point subdivision be approved based on findings of fact contained in the staff report, public testimony, and written comment.
Second?
Any further discussion?
I don't see any impact on the common area, which is the only thing that it really would impact, so.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. All in favor? Aye. Okay, thank you. So it's not just West Point. Alpine Trail seems to give us business also here. So we have, our next two items are easements related to Alpine Trail subdivision in Sealy Lake, and we have a staff report from Garrick Swanson.
Got to sit pretty close.
My name's Garrick Swanson with the Missoula County Parks, Trails, and Open Lands Program within CAPS.
And if you could pull it just a little bit closer, Garrick. Thank you.
And I am here today to talk about two easements for a total of, what I'll talk about, easement A, easement B, and easement C. So this proposal comes along with Alpine Trails up in Sealy Lake. It's a 30-lot subdivision that was approved in September of 2017. And then easement, easement A is to provide for legal access into the subdivision and to the park. And then easements B and C are being granted from Kakwa River Partners in return for the easement through the county parcel. Some existing conditions before I talk about where the easements are. The park up there adjacent Highway 83 is known as Memorial Park. It's about 1.1 acres. As you see in orange, we have existing ingress and egress to the north that also provides access to the three residential houses to the east. And then we have Thelma Lane, which is platted. It was never built. It is a public right-of-way. And then on the east side of the park, we have an existing trail, a non-motorized trail that connects with the current shared-use trail at the north end of Sealy Lake. And then this would provide non-motorized access to Morel Creek Road to the north, just off of Thelma Lane. There is a section of the trail in the middle there that is currently on private property, property belonging to Kakwa River Partners and to the Pittman residence to the south. And here we just have another exhibit without the aerial in here showing existing conditions. This is a view north of that existing trail located on Thelma Lane connecting to Morel Creek Road. And then this is that same trail looking south, where it connects into the park, as well as the driveway there that provides park access and access to the three residents to the east that I mentioned. So looking at easement A there in green on the south end of the park, it's about a 60-foot-wide easement that would provide access to Track A of the Carney-Sealy Creek Tracks Number Three, as well as Track B of Carney-Sealy Tracks Number Three. It would also provide vehicular, non-motorized access to the park and to those three residents. And then part of this process is that the existing approach to the north will be abandoned in there. Then easement B and C are slated to be granted from Kakwa River Partners to the county. Easement B allows that non-motorized trail to remain in place and to provide legal access. And then easement C is for primarily vehicular access into the park connecting into Thelma Lane and then into those residential houses. As mentioned before, easement A is approximately 60 feet wide north and south. It is up to the grantee to provide all financial costs for permits and construction of the approach within easement A, and also for the abandonment of the existing approach to the north in the park. Construction and abandonment needs to be done within a six-month period of each other pending weather. Construction of the approach needs to be done within three years of filing and recording this easement. The grantee will be responsible for meeting ASHTO standards for non-motorized trail and signage where the trail crosses within easement B at the junction of easement A and easement C. And the grantee will also be responsible for all maintenance associated with the road within easement A. And then moving on to easements B and C. Easement B is a 22-foot-wide public access easement for the existing shared-use trail to remain in place. Easement C is approximately a 30-foot-wide public access easement that will house a 20-foot-wide gravel road in there. Once again, the grantor is responsible for all costs and permits related to construction. It needs to be done within three years of filing and recording the easement. Construction and abandonment of the existing approach should be done within a six-month time period pending weather conditions in there. Then if the project is not completed within three years, the county could then choose to move forward, and Kakwa River Partners would be responsible for all permits and construction costs at that time in there. It'll be field located for the road within easement C to connect with Danaher Trail. ASHTO standards will be satisfied, as mentioned earlier. And then the county will be responsible for the maintenance of the trail within easement B, except for where it crosses with easement A and easement C within the 20-foot-wide gravel road. Parks, Trails, and Open Land supports the proposed easements A, B, and C to secure legal trail access, improve park access and circulation that will provide needed space for the memorial to expand and improve ingress and egress to Highway 83. We have worked over the past year with Dale, with PCI and his client. We've worked with the County Parks and Trails Board. And we've also worked with our park steward of Memorial Park to make sure that this meets everybody's goals and desires.
Thank you. Would the applicant's representative like to say anything? Mr. McCormick?
For the record, Dale McCormick with Professional Consultants representing Kakwa River Partners. Afternoon, Commissioners. I feel like this is like the conclusion of about four years of effort to get this subdivision to this place, and it's a good place. As you know, this subdivision has an extensive trail network that would be used for mountain bikes and cross-country skiing and hiking. And this just adds another layer to that pedestrian experience for the subdivision by having these reciprocal easements that allow the trail that's currently trespassing across our client's property to become public and to create a safer approach off of Highway 83 for access to the subdivision and the potential to expand and improve the Veterans Memorial. So it's been, I think, an exemplary collaborative process with Gary Pelletier and the folks that are part of the Memorial Group and County Parks and my client. And so thanks for your support. It's been a long process, but I think a very worthwhile one. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Yeah, stay up there, Dale. Go ahead, Gene.
I just wanted to make sure that, that A, B, and C would all be built before we abandon because those folks do use that as access for right now, right? Those three houses?
Yes, there's currently an approach permit modification that's been sent to MDT. And so this is folded into that. And yeah, it would not be abandoned until the new approach is constructed.
Okay, and so this is all like kind of your first step is to get this piece done? On the groundwork, I mean?
Right. For filing the first two phases of the subdivision, we need to have the boundary line relocation that had to do with the drain field. That's been approved. And then this was the other piece that both of those need to be approved in order to create that western boundary of the subdivision.
And I remember there was a lady here the last time that we had something with you that lives in one of the existing homes, and she had some concerns. I can't remember what.
Yeah, that was concerns about access off of SOS and the kind of improvements. And that was for filing the Phase 1 and 2 plat as part of the public hearing for the phasing process.
And were those going to be abandoned? I forget. The SOS road?
That will not be abandoned. It currently exists as a private access easement of sufficient width for the road. It'll be improved from the area where it serves the parking lot for the Catholic Church to get access to the property that is the subdivision.
Her concern was traffic, wasn't it?
Yep, because she's on the corner there. And I addressed her concerns at that meeting. I haven't heard from her since then.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there any public comment on either of these access easements? Either of these three? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Any additional questions from the commission or a motion? Should this be two motions or could we fold it into one?
You could fold it into one if you choose.
Okay, thank you.
There are no questions, thank you. This has been a long-term project, so thank you for sticking with it and finding something that was amenable to everybody. I would move to approve a perpetual access easement as shown on the exhibit as an easement A to Caquah River Partners LLC, and also move to accept two non-exclusive public access easements from Caquah River Partners LLC, shown as exhibits B and C, as easements B and C on the exhibit.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? And I concur, this will be a great trail connection for the community of Sealy Lake. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we will transition into our final item. And this is a public hearing on Gentry Estates subdivision. And whenever he's ready, we'll begin with a staff report from Tim Worley.
For the record, I'm Tim Worley with CAPS, and this is Gentry Estates. Five-lot subdivision with lots 1 through 4 being between an acre and an acre and a half in size, and Lot 5 is just over 20 acres. The project is located east of Grant Creek, sort of across the Grant Creek Valley from Prospect, PUD. It's north of the landfill and northeast of the Reserve Street interchange. The growth policy amendment that applies to this parcel is the 1980 Grant Creek area plan, which recommends two dwelling units per acre density for the property. CA3 is the zoning that applies, which is essentially one dwelling unit per five acres. And this subdivision is one dwelling unit per 5.04 acres, therefore meeting the zoning. Access is provided by Glen Eagle Way, a portion of which is within the city of Missoula. There's an additional 1,400-foot section that will have to be constructed to a 20-foot standard. And then there's a third piece of roadway, Gentry Estates, all but 300 feet of which are contained within the subdivision. And here's Gentry Way zoomed in on here. Again, all but 300 feet of Gentry Way will be contained within the subdivision. Gentry Way is going to be a 24-foot paved width, and our condition of approval recommends that this be completed prior to homes being constructed. Zooming back out with Glen Eagle Way, a good portion of it, again, is a paved city roadway. And this graphic shows the approximate end of existing pavement. Again, a 1,400-foot section of roadway will have to be constructed to get to the subdivision. Glen Eagle Way is proposed to be built to a 20-foot width. This must be paved since we're in the air stagnation zone. The condition of approval reinforces the paving and the 20-foot width. The condition also allows this to be built through a rural special improvement district, and construction must precede homes. This is the proposed rural special improvement district boundary that's in the applicant's packet. It encircles 111 lots, 97 of which are Glen Eagle at Grantland lots. Of course, Gentry Estates amounts to five of those 111. There are limits to the way we've penned the condition. The condition permits a rural special improvement district as a way of sharing the cost, but it doesn't require the rural special improvement district. The county, as you are aware, has obtained a number of Glen Eagle lots within the last week, and the county at this time makes no representation as to what it will do with those lots. Therefore, the condition is permissive regarding the RSID, but not requiring anything of the county at this time. The water supply for firefighting that's proposed for the subdivision is a cistern, and that's because the nearest hydrant for the subdivision is along the paved portion of Glen Eagle Way, which is within the city of Missoula, a significant distance from the subdivision. So what's proposed is a 7,200-gallon cistern in the heart of the subdivision between lots 2 and 3. This is a concept that has been approved by Rural Fire. We're recommending in our condition that Rural Fire approve the actual installation of the tank along with all necessary access easements. The tank has to maintain an adequate setback from combustible construction. It has to be physically acceptable, and there has to be a long-term maintenance agreement for this cistern. The property is within the wildland urban interface, and there is one way in and one way out to the subdivision. The applicant has offered Class A fire-rated roofing as a result, which you will see as a requirement in a condition of approval. Individual wells and septic systems are proposed for Gentry Estates. You'll note that on the large lot, there is no graphic showing a well or a septic system because this large lot is not required to undergo sanitation review because it is in excess of 20 acres. So what about city sewer? There is a sewer line that runs through Lot 5. Whoops. The applicant was required to investigate utilizing city sewer. This went before the Sewer Service Review Committee in late December 2015. Sewer would have required extension of the wastewater service area boundary, and the committee declined to extend that boundary, citing the city's growth policy's open and resource land use designation. When this made it to the Land Use and Planning Committee, they agreed that the proposal didn't meet the city's growth policy goals and objectives, and they voted to recommend denial of the sewer connection in late January 2016. The city council affirmed that vote on February 1st, 2016. Just as an aside regarding growth policy, there is a disparity between the county growth policy land use recommendation of two homes per acre. The city, again, is open and resource at one dwelling unit per 40 acres.
Hang on a second, Tim. Something beeping out there? Anybody? Okay.
It's all right. No problem, thank you. As far as the disparity in the land use designations, CAPS will attempt to sort through this disparity as part of its mapping project. We're aware of the issue and will be working on it with the mapping project. There is a water line that crosses a portion.
Tim, could you go back to that slide? I somehow missed everything that you just said there.
We acknowledge that there's a significant disparity between the city and county growth policy. Our growth policy is what applies as far as this hearing today, and we'll be working on the disparity between the city and the county land use designations.
Okay, that's what I thought you said, thanks.
There's a water line associated, we think, with Glen Eagle that crosses lots 1 and 2. We do have a condition recommending that that water line be removed or included in an easement on the final plat. Well, issues related to the natural environment, wildlife and wildlife habitat were central to this review. This is an important grassland environment. It's elk winter range. It's an open space cornerstone per the 2006 Open Space Plan. It's within a cornerstone. It's in an area of conservation easements and large tracts that have been kept that way for elk winter range and movement. It's considered a grassland area of highest importance. It's a Tier 1 grassland, which is considered the highest grassland ecotype within western Montana. It's considered an area of Swainson's Hawk, Golden, and Bald Eagle habitat per Five Valleys Audubon's comments. So as far as mitigating impacts, let's start with living with wildlife information, which is something that we are recommending. Obviously, you can have attractants that include things like bird feeders, garbage, dog food, and barbecues. We are recommending some modified language, and that's in, and I can't remember the color. I think it's green. That just came from Sharon Rose on Monday. So we're recommending slight modifications to the existing living with wildlife language in the staff report. This is obviously residential development in a sensitive location. Particularly with Lot 5, a home can have proportionally greater impact with a home being located almost anywhere on that 20 acres. In some cases, that might reduce the benefit of what is proposed by lots 1 through 4. So we are recommending a building envelope above the 37, 78-foot elevation with the rest of that lot being an open space, no build, no alteration zone. We feel that this makes the layouts on lots 1 through 4 more effective overall as a subdivision. Lots 1 through 4 are set back from each other roughly 100 to 160 feet based on the CA3 side yard setback. Comparable to this would be if you were to push a home on Lot 4 up against its front yard setback, which is depicted on this slide. You'd be between 100 and 120 feet from the home on Lot 4. But we feel that there should be a little bit more flexibility than that. So we're recommending a building envelope that ends up being about 2.37 acres if you take out the setback. We feel this provides flexibility while focusing the overall development. Just some rationale and support for this, some of which comes from the growth policy, which encourages maintaining the quality and function of important winter range, habitat, and migration values. Five Valleys Audubon noted that Lot 5 should be dedicated to wildlife habitat protection, and the inherent values of a cluster design would not be attained otherwise. And Fish, Wildlife, and Parks has done studies up in this area. This is certainly an elk winter range and a general movement corridor as elk travel between the North Hills and the Rattlesnake Mountains to the northeast. At this time, I'd like to summarize the public comment that we've received, most of which is in Tab 12 of the submittal. Three comments are attached to the staff report, and we did receive two additional comments today. And those are on the back table if anybody'd like to get their hands on them. What we heard is that this is valuable elk habitat. There are multiple trail connection possibilities here, and these could be lost with development. This is an important grasslands area that includes native fescue and other important native plants like rare Missoula flocks. Elk have been observed here both in the fall and in the winter. Development may preclude pedestrian connections and elk movement. Development could render adjacent open space ineffective. Updated master planning is needed in this area. Development should wait until the Glen Eagle litigation issues are sorted out. Wildlife attractant information should be provided to homeowners. Avoid planting non-native, particularly grass species, as they tend to spread and choke out natives. Residents should recognize this as a functioning landscape and maintain it as such. The developer should be commended for clustering with a large lot. One person involved in the litigation with the county should be awarded the damages being sought. This person is a conservation easement holder. The homes should be clustered with pedestrian paths to the rattlesnake. This could end up being the first of multiple small subdivisions. Roughly 400 elk use this location as part of winter range. Adjacent properties are managed under conservation easements. Elk may not be able to graze near the subdivision, which expands the development footprint of the area. Proper management of the large lot may facilitate elk movement. Without dedicated open space, wildlife benefits may be negated. Dog numbers should be limited and attractants reduced. Camping has become a problem in the area. There's a lack of pedestrian facilities already on Glen Eagle Way, the paved portion. And so you see vehicle pedestrian conflicts, particularly when the bus drops kids off in the afternoon. Sediment in area runoff plugs some culverts, and this problem may grow with more development. Which lots will benefit from Glen Eagle Way improvements? Is the cost-sharing proposal appropriate? Should fire sprinklers be required? A house burned down in 2007 above the subdivision based on distance to water impart. Will the roads be in place before the homes are built? The current road is inadequate for additional development because it's narrow, blind corners, and has no sidewalk. It doesn't make sense to have a 20-foot access road when you have a 24-foot road within the subdivision. Roads must be built before the homes go up, and water supply must precede the homes. Elk use the Glen Eagle area now without many issues and explore trail connections with development of Glen Eagle Way. This subdivision was noticed on June 5th, and we contacted adjacent property owners, neighborhood associations, and groups. In summary, staff recommends approval of Gentry Estates subdivision subject to the conditions in your staff report.
Thank you, Tim. Would the applicant or applicant's representative like to speak?
Good afternoon, County Commissioners. For the record, Dale McCormick from PCI, representing Kirk Gentry for the Gentry Estates subdivision. So I guess first off, I just want to thank Tim. This has been another one of those projects that's required a lot of perseverance on everybody's part and taken a lot of different forms. And appreciate Tim's help and level-headedness through the process. So I wanted to first look at, there's basically, I mean, the good news is we agree with all the conditions except three of them. So I'm going to kind of explain our position on those three conditions. First one, as Tim described, is what we proposed was a 20-foot-wide gravel road from the edge of pavement, city limits, to the intersection with Gentry Way. And to share that. that cost through RSID or some other funding mechanism. And so the paving part of it, this shows a diagram where there's 1,400 feet of it that is proposed to be 20-foot wide gravel road, and this suggestion came from the Missoula Rural Fire District, and the idea would be that the unapproved portion would be constructed using funds from an RSID, as Tim showed before, similar funding mechanism. Then the portion in orange is within the subdivision and off-site road outside of the subdivision that would be paved per the subdivision regulations, including the off-site portion. So we put together a cost estimate for the road, and according to our calculations, the cost of improving Glen Eagle Way as an unpaved road would be $70,980, and for a paved road, it would be $117,180. Kirk would be, we would be willing to contribute $3,194 for a gravel road, or $5,273 for a paved road, as a proportional 4.5% share, which was the five of 111 lots. The cost of onsite and onsite improvements for Gentry Way will be the responsibility Kirk, and we estimated that to be $143,400. So we're proposing to amend the condition as follows, which would take it back to a gravel road, again, based on the recommendation of the Missoula Rural Fire District for a 20-foot unobstructed drivable width, a fire apparatus access road. And then to add the language, the cost of construction shall be shared by the county and the applicant in proportion to the number of lots benefited by the improvements. Should the applicant agree, road construction may be funded through a rural special improvement district or other shared cost-funding mechanism. So condition number three is the one that staff has recommended, no build, no alteration zone from the 3,778-foot contour and higher on lot five. Excuse me, 3,778 contour and lower on lot five, which results in no build area of 17.05 acres. Actually, it sounds like it's a little bit more than that, based on the 2.73. To my calculations, it looked more like three acres, but still the same, roughly the same. So earlier on, we considered developing this as a rural cluster open space development as allowed by the zoning regulations. In response to a request for a zoning clarification in a March 1, 2016 memo from CAPS, it stated that a development of two or more structures where the density of the development is two dwelling units per acre or less, and where at least 100% of the net allotted area is either dedicated or set aside as open space lands. For example, if a developer would like to apply the reduced yard setbacks granted to a rural cluster open space development consisting of 17.5 acres and net allotted area of 8.75 acres would be dedicated as open space, and 8.75 acres would be available for development. So that was the determination from staff at that time, back in 2016. The zoning regulations require that to do this type of development, which allows for reduced setbacks, so the side yard setbacks could be reduced to 15 feet rather than 50 feet, we would need to set aside 11.9 acres that would be protected based on 50% of the net allotted area, which would be 25.21 acres minus the 1.4 acres of road, and then half of 23.81 acres, resulting in the 12 acres rounded up. Staff is asking us to set aside 17.5 acres, or 72% of the net allotted area, far in excess of the 50% required if we were doing a rural cluster open space development. So what this shows, and there's copies available on the back table, and I distributed copies to each of the three commissioners and to Tim Worley, is that we'd be willing to set aside an area totaling 12 acres on lot five, but to set aside 17.5 acres, from our perspective, is not acceptable, and we've proposed an 8.05 building envelope, which is consistent with the subdivision regulations and the rural cluster standards in the zoning ordinance, resulting in a 12-acre no-build area that is contiguous with the conservation easement, which is on the Republic Services property to the south, thereby expanding the protection of that conservation easement. So condition number three, what we would propose is amending it so that rather than involving the 3778 elevation, it would be represented by the 8.05 acres shown in the previous slide referred to as Exhibit A. Condition number five, we prefer to see removed. This water line is in the ground, but after multiple attempts to get as-built drawings from DEQ, we were unable to obtain evidence of this water system's approval. It has never been put into use. We're not even sure of the precise location of these pipes because there's no as-belts, and to require an easement for a relic water system with no other easements that exist for the system on other lots doesn't seem appropriate. As documented in the Water and Sanitation Report, insufficient water was available for a community water system, which is the reason why it's never been put into use. The last recommended amendment from our point of view is that condition number 14, which describes the no-build area, the change, so it says the 12 acres of lot area on lot five is an open space, no build, no alteration zone, which is also depicted on the plat and on the attached Exhibit A. So that's just to make consistency between condition number one and condition number 14. And with those changes, we concur with staff's recommended conditions, and would appreciate your support and approval of the subdivision, and be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Can we hold questions just for a second? We don't have a tremendous number of folks here, but is there any public who would like to comment on Gentry Estates' proposed subdivision? Come on up, Mr. Lindler.
So I'm Bert Lindler. I am a resident of Prospect Meadows, which is across Grant Creek Road from this proposed subdivision. I'm also a volunteer who care-takes for wildlife winter range, not immediately, but very close to this property. I prepared written comments after a great deal of thought, but not as much information as has been presented today, so rather than bore you by reading my comments, I'm going to try to respond to specific points as well as I can. And I will first address specific points in Gentry Estates, and then later, I want to take this opportunity to address the real issue we're facing, which is an entire hillside that's been used as elk winter range for a very long time, also has plants, et cetera, that's going to be converted into residential space with, I hope, some recognition of the wildlife values, open space values, trail opportunities, recreation potential. So, dealing first with Gentry Estates. I want to thank the planning staff for the recommendation of a building envelope. Certainly, the smaller the envelope and the closer to the other homes, the more benefit it provides to wildlife. I do appreciate, however, the importance of keeping that building envelope contiguous with the Republic Services conservation easement. That continuity benefits both of those parcels. I live down airstream from these lots, and many other residents in Missoula live down airstream from these lots. Missoula is an area that is at the hub of five valleys, and it's an area that has a very hard time meeting particulate air quality standards. So I appreciate the requirement that the roads be paved. I also think there, I don't know exactly how the wood stove regulations fit here, but I do not think there should be any wood stoves allowed on the top of Glen Eagle and the county land that's going to be developed. That smoke from those wood stoves is all going to, unless the air is moving up, that's going to end up in the lungs of a lot of our residents, and I think we should restrict them to pellet stoves and natural gas fireplaces, as are the folks immediately adjoining them in the city. I really, I've had the opportunity to live in a subdivision where all of the infrastructure got built, a group of lots were sold, homes were built, additional infrastructure got built, lots were sold, additional homes were built, et cetera, et cetera, and this went on for decades. And in the end, you have 154 homes and one vacant lot, and all of the infrastructure's in place, and no one had to live with deficient infrastructure at any point in that process. And I look across Glen Eagle Way, and I don't see that happening. I see something just almost the opposite. With very low-density housing, as exists there now, it kind of works, as near as I can tell. I've looked, and I've thought, well, this is so much better than that. Well, it really isn't so much better than that. With the low density of population that's there now, the roads kind of work, the wildlife is free to move, there's very few internal fences on those properties or boundary fences. They don't have dogs roaming loose on the adjoining wildlife properties, at least I don't hear about it if that's happening. And the residents who are there now have been pretty well free to use those hillsides as public open space. They kind of know the people, and they kind of get to go places. I'm just really concerned, when I look at what's plotted up there, and I look at minor subdivisions such as this, and I start adding it all up, and I'm seeing a situation where down the line, people may well not have any public place where they can go to walk. They may well not have trails that would reach them tenths of a mile to the national forest or tenths of a mile to city open space. So I know the city has acquired lots in the, the county.
I wish it was the city.
My apologies, my apologies. I know the county has acquired lots atop Glen Eagle Way, and so you have a real interest in the outcomes of what's going to happen here, and you may also have opportunities to influence what happens here. I really hope that your planning staff and your public open land staff are sitting down and thinking very hard about what are the opportunities here. I know you've had plenty of opportunity to consider the problems. I do want to say that I do not feel that building a 20-foot access road to a subdivision of five lots with internal roads of 24 feet makes any sense. I do not think providing a 20-foot trunk road to Argyle and Portsmouth and the other streets between the existing paved portion of Glen Eagle Way, which is 24 feet wide, and Gentry Estates, makes any sense. The idea that a trunk road serving a whole bunch of homes would be narrower than the internal homes in a five-lot subdivision is beyond my comprehension. I do understand the developer, and nobody wants to get stung with paying for the real infrastructure that is required by this subdivision, but I personally do not think it should be approved without standards for the roads that match the existing standards and that are going to be certainly needed when and if, years, decades from now. Certainly, the subdivision below Gentry Estates is just almost certain to get annexed. Right now, some of the developers below there have an agreement, and after five years, they cannot protest annexation. They were in the city, they filed a lawsuit, they got out of the city, but as I understand it, as part of the terms of that settlement, they can protest annexation after a certain period of time, five years from whenever that was reached. So I really don't want to see a 20-foot road serving 24-foot roads. I want Missoula Rural Fire to go to that cistern, test it, and approve it. I don't want them to approve the design. I want them to approve the water coming out of that cistern. I sat in my home and saw lightning strike, and I saw a tree catch fire across the way, and the tree burned and burned and burned, and I thought, how in the world can a tree burn that long? And it was a home up on top, above where these homes are. So I want to see that cistern in place. I want to see it approved, tested and approved before any homes go in. I want to see 24-foot roads, and I want, to the degree possible, a lot of thought given by the county's staff to the opportunities here as well as the problems. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lindler. Any additional public comment on Gentry Estates? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Questions from the commission, and I have a lot too. So Commissioner Curtis.
Glad to see Shannon here, because she can answer a few questions also. Let's see. So I guess to Mr. McCormick, you referred to the fact that you thought about doing a rural cluster, whatever, rural cluster open space development, but that's not the method you chose, right?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear on that.
Yeah, I mean, basically, we wanted to see where, we anticipated that a building envelope would be required on lot five. We weren't sure if it would be that 50/50, or if we'd be able to get more. Now we're told that it needs to be far less. And so at that time, we worked around the side yard setback requirement, because 50-foot setback for one and a quarter-acre lots is a pretty significant setback, but we decided to move forward with it as it is presented today because that was the trade-off.
Then I guess my other question is, is there a reason why the building envelope on lot five that staff proposed is not big enough? That seems plenty big to build a house.
Well, one reason is that we're willing to provide something that meets the zoning regulations for cluster development, which we've had other projects where the question of, you know, is this cluster development yes or no? Well, this is what the regulations say, and in this case, we're meeting that standard without the benefit of the side yard setbacks. And there is, you know, value to that ridge that comes out further that we would, you see where it comes to kind of a point there, that we're at the 3770-foot contour, so it's about an eight-foot drop down that ridge, where it's flatter and a more desirable building site, if somebody wanted to build there, which they may or may not, but it adds more value to that lot while the same... adds more value to that lot while at the same time, expanding the conservation values to the south. So that was the compromise.
And then my last question for you is in regard to condition number five and that water line.
Yeah.
So apparently, a water line was put in, nobody knows exactly where it is. Would anybody be able to claim use to that water line without having an easement anyway?
It's a curious thing, and I sincerely tried, and I don't know what the cutoff date at which DEQ purges their information, but I couldn't find any evidence that it was approved. I've, I've got nothing to rely on. We have, where we got that alignment was from an earlier design by Gordon Sorenson for the water system, that I think wasn't actually, I think it went to another firm after that, possibly TLI. They didn't have information. So that's, that's our best guess of where it is. But honestly, if we were to decide a house, I mean, we might not, if we didn't encounter that line, our preference wouldn't be to have to remove it. And to put an easement on something that isn't in service doesn't make sense, especially since there aren't easements on other, the other direction.
Yeah, that, I think I'm agreeing with you, that it doesn't seem to me like anyone would have the recorded right to use a water line there, even if it was buried at some point in time. So, okay, that was my last question.
So Dale, in no conceivable circumstance would, I guess it has yet to be seen the functionality of the water line, but you could never see it, if you were to assume that it actually was functional, would you have any use for it within this subdivision?
Within this subdivision? No. We're relying on individual wells and individual drain fields.
Okay. Tim, come on up.
I just wanted to speak to the rural open space cluster. That was not our template or our standard when we made our recommendation. You'll see the arguments, if you will, under natural environment, wildlife, and wildlife habitat impacts. We felt that it was just a more defined area of development if you push that envelope up to 3778. So I just wanted to make reference to that. I mean, there's a lot of, Dale did talk to us extensively about the rural open space cluster possibility early on, and some of the benefits of that. We're not trying to recapture that in any way with our recommendations, we're just trying to define where development happens.
Thank you. And Tim, stay, why don't you stay up here? So Mr. Lindler made this comment, and I had the same question. Why would we only require Glen Eagle Way to be 20 feet wide when Gentry Way must be 24 feet wide?
It's sort of an onsite, offsite road distinction. By a number of lots served, the onsite road, and Gentry Way does continue 300 feet beyond the subdivision, it has to meet that 24-foot standard. The offsite road is much more an issue of providing emergency access, and the basic emergency access road is a 20-foot wide road. So that's why that disparity, it's, it's a little awkward to be sure, but it's, it's mainly based on that onsite, offsite road distinction.
So we have, maybe this is for John also, no legal basis to require 24 feet, 24-foot wide offsite road, even though for all intents and purposes, it makes imminent sense logically?
That's correct. We don't have a legal basis to require a 24-foot paved offsite road. I believe in your packet, somewhere would be a letter from Alan McCormick, the attorney for the developer, who points out that in our subdivision regulations, there is this distinction between offsite and onsite roads. And Alan's points are well taken.
If ever the rest of the area was, were to be built out, and that was then within some other subdivision, or more homes were served, would that developer be required to bring that up to 24-foot standard at that time?
Yeah, it's very possible.
So I guess dwelling on the road for a minute, and as has been pointed out, it is completely unclear what the ultimate disposition will be of Glen Eagle and the lots that Missoula County recently acquired. But as far as improvements to Glen Eagle Way, is the county at this point in time under any obligation to do any improvements to that road?
No.
And paving the road is, I don't know if, Shannon Terrio might like to speak to this, desirable from an air quality standpoint? And I'll need you back up here in a minute, Tim, but you can take a break for a second.
Hi, Shannon Terrio, Director of Environmental Health. From an air quality standpoint, the road, a new road has to be paved. It's required, it's within the air stagnation zone. In addition, the wood stoves would be limited, because I heard that come up before, to pellet stoves or natural gas fireplaces, because this is all within the air stagnation zone.
Okay. So from your standpoint, maybe I was hearing the applicant, or applicant's representative incorrectly, we have no discretion as far as whether this is gravel or paved?
No, it has to be paved.
Even the offsite component?
It has to be paved if it's a new road. I don't know when the roads were put in above, so I would have to look into that before I could answer the offsite road question. But the requirements to pave new roads in the air stagnation zone have existed since 1994 at least.
John, do you have any thoughts on Glen Eagle Way? So it's currently a two-track, is that gravel, two-track?
Yeah, it's been described as a goat trail, but I believe it's a two-track, and, you know, what appropriate four-wheel drive vehicle can travel on it? And so, because that is not an adequate road to serve this subdivision, I think a fair reading of the air stagnation rules requiring a new road, I mean, you know, sure, there's a two-track there now, but there has to be a real road built. That is a new road for purposes of the air stagnation paving requirements.
That would be, that would be how we've interpreted it in the past. You can't just have a road that goes through a field and consider it an existing road. So that, that squares up with how we've looked at things in the past.
Okay, thanks. Tim, something to add?
Yeah, I work with Ben Schmidt on this, and I think theoretically, the road could have been grandfathered in if it had served three homes prior to 1994, and maybe Shannon can correct some of the nuances here. And we looked, and we could not find a home that was served up above that dated back that far. So it appears to be a new road, or would be a new road when they construct it, or whoever constructs it.
Okay. Tim, stay up here if you could. And we might need to draw upon Shannon here in a second. So let's talk sewer for a minute. So is, and maybe we went over this during some of our discussions related to Glen Eagle and the settlement, but is Glen Eagle within the sewer service area for Missoula?
It is not.
It is not, so...
Well, I don't know about Glen Eagle, sorry, Gentry Estates is not.
Correct. Does anyone know if Glen Eagle is? And I guess this all relates to the broader question of development up in this area. Clearly, the city of Missoula denied expanding the sewer service area to include Gentry, but in terms of looking at the broader development potential, does Glen Eagle lie within the sewer service area? And might any of those lots which we've inherited similarly be denied connection to the sewer pipe, which apparently is in the ground up there?
Right, so the, when we went to the Sewer Service Utility Service Review Committee meeting at that time, and this is in the information that Tim sent you, Glen Eagle is in the wastewater service area, but in order to serve Gentry's property, it would need to be expanded beyond its current location. So at the time, the Glen Eagle PUD was approved, and the agreements for annexation, so at that time, it wasn't about contract for sewer, it was about annexation, and that was the boundary, but it did not extend further into the Gentry ownership. And the reason that we went to the utility at that time as a Sewer Service Review Committee back in 2016 is that when you begin a subdivision process that is on the edge of the city limits, the first place you go is to that committee for them to decide whether then I annex or do a contract for sewer, or whether sewer is available. And in this case, because it was outside of the wastewater service area boundary, there was no way to make that determination without deciding that question of, do we want to expand the boundary? And as Tim pointed out earlier, their growth policy doesn't indicate that that's the direction they would go, so the council voted against it.
So I guess just to push that a little bit farther, as we have seen with, say, West Point subdivision, which we discussed earlier, some of these can drag on for years and years, and conditions might change, such that in this case, hypothetically, at some point in time, maybe six months from now, maybe a year from now, maybe there would be a willingness to include what is Gentry Estates in the wastewater service area, prior to a bit of dirt being pushed or any building permits being issued. What are your thoughts if, and maybe this is jumping ahead a little bit to talking about possible amendments, but what if we had a condition of approval that required connection to city sewer, such that prior to issuance of a building permit, if the area was included in the sewer service area, that you would need to hook up? So it's not a matter of you've invested money in the ground by having septics for all of your, your, your homes, and then lo and behold, you're now included in the sewer service area. It's before any investment of infrastructure on the ground is made.
So I guess my response would be, we asked that question, the answer was no.
So I guess what I'm saying is hypothetically, again, based on experience, that you may or may not get this thing built out and final plat filed within short order. I mean, this could drag on, and at some point, the city's position on including this area in the sewer service area could change, which might open up the possibility to hook up to sewer prior to any construction being completed on the ground. Would you be open to that connecting to city sewer in that scenario, or are you just...
A hypothetical question, and the fact is that the city denied it. Our preference is not to connect to sewer. So I guess the answer to that hypothetical question would be a hypothetical no. That decision's been made, and it's a different jurisdiction, so. And it's the sanitation approval that we've, that our client has invested a lot of time and energy and money in getting it to, you know, 95% approval by DEQ. So ultimately, it's their call. We've designed the drain fields, well locations, and so I don't, I can't, I can't imagine the circumstances that we want to reverse that.
Okay. I've been dominating a lot of time. Additional questions? Cola, do you have anything you want to ask?
I'd just like to go back to the road real quick, and funding it by an RSID. And I just want to be very clear about the fact that there are lots of opportunities up there, and the county recently through legal settlement did obtain a majority of the lots up there. And we have no idea what we're going to do with them. We could sell them as-is, we could change them and sell them, we could vacate the plat, put it as open space, we could do a land swap. You know, there's no, we have really not had any conversations about what we're going to do with those lots. And until we do, and until we know that, I don't want anyone to take away from this meeting the fact that if we do approve this subdivision, we would agree to an RSID. Because since we're the majority landholder there, we could protest an RSID. And so I would like to know, because if, if we were to go into an RSID, we would be spending tax dollars to build a road. And then that road would have to have a very clear public benefit. And there are several scenarios that we could do with this property that wouldn't have a clear public benefit, like if, if a developer's going to develop it, that's not a clear public benefit that the county should be paying improvements on. And so I just want to be really clear that it sounds like your plan is to try to put RSID on to construct the road, and I'm wondering if you have a contingency plan? Again, not saying that we wouldn't, that we would protest it for sure, but I, but I think that we're in, we're in a really bad situation up in Glen Eagle. I guess it's kind of mostly over, but this puts us, approving this subdivision, puts us in another potentially bad situation, where we're approving a subdivision, where then we're a majority landholder with RSID, and we don't know if it's a public benefit right now if we would participate or not. So do you have a contingency plan of how else this road could be built without the county paying for it if we indeed did protest an RSID?
And I'll, I'll just jump on there. My question, maybe is more or less the same thing, but maybe a little different, is would you, would the applicant be willing to shoulder 100% of the cost for the 20-foot and the 24-foot paved road widths as currently required?
So I'm going to sort of launch this and then let Alan and Kirk maybe take a crack at it. I mean, I think the, the reality of the situation is that we feel that the improvements that should have been made with Glen Eagle Way, with the Glen Eagle at Grantland subdivision, didn't get installed. And so recognizing that, it seems very unfair to put the entire burden of that infrastructure, which should have been installed and wasn't installed, on my client. And so what we're offering is to pay some proportional share of that infrastructure that wasn't installed, to get to a more fair solution than putting it all on Kirk to say, yes, it wasn't built, so you need to build it. That doesn't seem fair from our perspective.
Yeah, we get it that that's your preference, but the question is, short of participation of the county and, and shouldering the bulk of RSID assessments, and going into this wide open for you all, would, would you be willing to, I mean, what, what is, what is the contingency if that does not come to pass? Would you be willing to pay for all of these improvements?
No, I wouldn't pencil. You know, and we're willing to do whatever's right for what the county wants to do, and appreciate Tim working with us, but we don't want to shoulder something that isn't our responsibility, and it just wouldn't financially be feasible. I live in an area in Columbia Falls similar to this, where the road is county road to my property. And then, you know, they oil that, we share a dust abatement deal every year, and then I have it oiled on down to my property on my own. But, you know, we share what benefits all of us. So for us to pave a stretch of road that isn't ours, you know, it's awful expensive even to come up with $140-some thousand dollars just to pave our area, but to come up with the other, it's just cost prohibitive.
And could you state your name for the reference?
My name's Kirk Gentry.
Okay, Kirk, thanks. And, and I don't think any of us are saying that the ultimate outcome will be that there would never in any circumstance be county participation, it's just that at this point in time, we really have no firm idea of what the outcome is going to be of the Glen Eagle subdivision.
Well, as Commissioner Curtis knows, we kind of came across this property over a period of time through a default from Mr. Nye. We're doing our darndest to clean the area up, and I think through the efforts of Dale and Alan, we want to do what's right, so it's going to be a good example when it's done right, but we just can't shoulder that burden of the pavement up to our property on our own. Thank you.
Yeah, Cola?
And I see why, from your perspective, it doesn't seem fair, but we lost that lawsuit and paid the settlement, and that's how we made that unfairness right, that those improvements were never put in potentially. Yeah, it looks like John maybe has an opinion.
John, Mr. John Hart?
Well, I do want to address the legal argument. Well, I do want to address the legal argument that somehow the Missoula County is obligated to put in this road, and that it is unfair to Mr. Gentry if we don't. But I want to preface it by saying too, that, you know, this is the legal black and white argument that I'm going to offer to you, and, you know, and I appreciate all the effort that Mr. Gentry and his representatives have made to work with Missoula County to try to make this a good subdivision, and like Mr. Gentry said, do the right thing. But I just want to point out that Judge McLean, who is the one that issued the adverse ruling to Missoula County, said, and I'm quoting, "Missoula County had a duty to the plaintiffs who purchased tracks in Glen Eagle for failing to require a bond prior to tracks being sold." And of course, those bonds were bonds to ensure that the infrastructure was put in, including paving Glen Eagle Way. I want to make it clear on the record that Kirk Gentry is not a plaintiff in that lawsuit. He didn't purchase tracks in Glen Eagle subdivision. That ruling does not apply to him. Judge McLean went on to say that the purpose of the bonding statute is to protect innocent purchasers such as plaintiffs in this matter, and the matter being the Glen Eagle, the Johnston litigation against Missoula County. And again, Mr. Gentry is not a purchaser of Glen Eagle tracks, and with all due respect to him, I'm going to say he's not innocent. He, like Missoula County, was a business partner of Ken Nye, and we know as well as he does how that ended up. And Commissioner Rowley, as she just said, the taxpayers of Missoula County have now paid for the sins that Judge McLean found that we had committed by failing to bond that infrastructure. That lawsuit's been settled, we have title to the property up there, and Missoula County satisfied, and we discharge any past or future obligation we might have had to install infrastructure, including paving Glen Eagle Way. It's my legal opinion that we shouldn't continue to be held hostage of that order by landowners who own property beyond the end of pavement, and there's a lot of property beyond Glen Eagle. There's an RSID exhibit that PCI submitted that shows the boundaries of the gentry estates, but it also shows just how much land is to the east, and it would be served by paving Glen Eagle Way. And now, we don't have any obligations to those individuals, they were not plaintiffs in the Johnston lawsuit. And I want to point out MCA 76-3-510, which says, "A local government may require a subdivider to pay or guarantee payment for part of all of the costs of extending capital facilities related to public health and safety, including but not limited to public roads, sewer lines, and storm drains to a subdivision. The costs must reasonably reflect the expected impacts directly attributable to the subdivision." And as we've all alluded to, Missoula County now owns a lot of property around that 1,400-foot stretch of Glen Eagle Way that we're talking about today. But we've also said that we have no idea what's going to happen with those. And one of the options, it's been pointed out, we could vacate the plat and dedicate the land as open space forever. And so, if that was the case, then there is no benefit to Missoula County's property up there. The only individuals who would be benefited by Gentry Way is these five lots that are being proposed for subdivision at this time. And again, I'm done. That's my legal position, and I'll leave it up to you to do what's right for the public and in good public policy and what might be equitable. But that's my rebuttal to the argument that somehow Missoula County is legally obligated to participate in the paving of that road.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Gene.
Oh, sorry. I just wanted to say that we were all hoodwinked by Mr. Nye and his promises. The improvement should have been made, but the taxpayers are now paying for that settlement.
Yes, indeed. Erica Grundy.
Erica Grundy, Director of Risk and Benefits from Missoula County. I just want to make sure it's clear on this record. I completely agree with everything John stated, other than the last statement that that road, Glen Eagle Way, would only benefit these five tracks. We all just need to remember that there are other landowners remaining within the Glen Eagle subdivision, so I want to make sure that's clear. Missoula County is not the only landowner within that subdivision, so I don't want this record to be taken out of context by any of those landowners.
Okay. So noted. A few other questions here. One, something that Mr. Lindler brought up. Tim, I don't know if you want to address the issue of the 7,200-gallon cistern, and whether it will be, I guess, tested before it is ultimately approved as adequate?
Two more lay from caps. Yes, it will be tested. Missoula Rural will review the installation, they'll review the ongoing maintenance, and they will test it.
Okay. So while we're on the fire-related topic, talk to us a little bit, Tim, about how the hazard ratings that correlate to the little check sheet in the submittal packet here relate to subdivision review? So, this gentry estate's rated as a moderate hazard, I believe, and I saw a reference to it, to at least some of the access into this area as high hazard. How does, that's great that that's been identified, but how does that relate to the review and staff recommendations?
We felt that to keep this sort of in the moderate category, at least per our appendix C in the subdivision regulations, we should require that Class A fire-rated roofs, which essentially were offered up as part of that appendix C, that that be required ultimately. There are other things you can do to keep your hazard rating lower. You can build with non-flammable siding, non-flammable decks, that sort of thing. The one thing offered up by the developer was that Class A fire-rated roofing, and if you feel there are other mitigations that might be, there's kind of different things going on. There's the rating that's done on the site, and then there's the rating on a coarser scale provided in the Community Wildfire Protection Plan maps. And the bend in the road close to Grant Creek Road, really, that area starts getting in a higher hazard area, if you take a look at the WUI maps. So there's kind of different ratings, different rating screens, I guess you could say.
Sure. Well, I guess suffice it to say, it does worry me that yet again, we have a one-way-out subdivision. I do have a little experience in the world of fire, and have done fairly extensive research on fatality fires and common denominators of fatality fires by both firefighters and the general public, and one common denominator is light flashy fuels, not heavy fuels, light flashy fuels, such as the grasslands we're seeing. And that's of a great concern to me. And while we might, I think, the roofing type is certainly a mitigation measure as far as home ignitability goes, there are other measures that ought to be taken, and along those lines, I have seen in other subdivisions, in the covenants, provision for firewise or defensible space recommendations, which would seem entirely appropriate here if we so chose. Is that something, Tim, that we could require to be included in the covenants?
I believe so.
Okay. Thank you. Additional questions from the commission? If not, I guess, oh, Cola, yes.
Tim, could you maybe just briefly address, there was a lot of comments about pedestrian connections and things like that. Could you just comment on those within this, or the lack thereof, and what the regs say we can and cannot require?
Yeah, minor subdivisions can't be required to install pedestrian facilities. They can, they're required to merely waive the right to protest future installation of facilities if facilities happen in this area. People do walk, and maybe Burt can speak to it, but people do walk that road fairly extensively, the neighbors do, so.
And it seemed like at least some of the concerns were focused on off-site improvements farther down the road where people may currently live, and again, we could not mandate off-site pedestrian improvements in this case.
Yeah, that's right. There's a conservation easement immediately to the south that has a 10-foot pedestrian easement, I believe it is, that rings like three sections of that rectangular-shaped parcel. So I think that's where some people are concerned too, is that there is a possibility of pedestrian facilities immediately to the south, it's just a 10-foot easement, but...
Okay, thanks. Gene, did you have a question?
No, just to state that a lot of times, places that people walk that are open like this, they're actually trespassing. And I, you know, the connection to the rattlesnake in the future sounds like a nice dream, but it will take a lot to get there.
So, if there aren't any other questions, are there any amendments that folks would like to offer?
We definitely need to do the wildlife one, but I'm willing to strike condition number five. I would move to strike condition number five because I think it's a lot to try and guess, actually, where the line is, and I don't think it has any future use, or it isn't going to hurt anything. If somebody is digging their basement and hits the line, they're going to break it, but it doesn't have a legal easement that's been filed anywhere, so no one has the right to use it anyway, and it doesn't have any purpose for this one, and it doesn't have any purpose for any future. I know at one point, Mr. Nye had a, you know, he has a water tank that's way up on the hill, and he had this, he called his well Miracle, and he was going to, you know, bring water down here, but it's not, it's not a real thing, so I'm willing to take that off. It just seems like a waste of investigation and trying to identify where something might be that isn't going to have a use anyway, so I'd move to strike condition number five.
Come on up, Mr. Gentry.
Would it be beneficial to the county if that other stretch of the road is paved, you know, from Glen Eagle on up to our portion?
Would it be beneficial in relation to the water line?
No, if you go ahead and pave the, if that other, the first portion of the road from Glen Eagle up to ours is paved. You know, right now, you guys are saying you don't want to pave that, correct? Even though you've got a lot of lots up there? Would it be to your benefit?
So, Mr. Gentry, we can maybe come back to that. Right now, what we're discussing is the water line.
Okay, I thought we were, my apologies.
No, okay, thank you. So we have a motion to strike condition number five.
I just wanted to clarify, if Shannon does agree that this is a weird thing where the DEQ could never, you know...
Shannon, you want to come on up?
From what I know and remember about it, the DEQ never approved it, and so, even if somebody wanted to use it, they wouldn't be able to. So it would have to kind of start all over. That was my understanding when we were talking about it, because the subdivision regulations require you to connect to a public water supply if one is right there, and this is just not recognized as being a real thing. Yeah, viable, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
In that case, I would second the motion.
Okay. Any further discussion on striking condition number five? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I would like to offer an amendment to add, I'm not sure, Tim, would this be a condition of approval to add to the covenants, a firewise, defensible space section, or how would we go about doing that? I had some language I worked on, if I can find my stuff, let's see. There's a couple different directions you could go, and you could do both these things. You could include covenant language about defensible space information. Let me see if I can make this a little bigger. You could include defensible space information in the covenants, to be reviewed and approved by Missoula Rural Fire and the County Fire Inspector. What we did with Alpine Trails was a little more in-depth, which is a defensible space maintenance agreement. That was more in a forested context, and I'm not sure in a grassland context necessarily how you'd achieve it. It's not that it's unachievable, it's just I'm not sure. So you could add one or the other, or both of these potential conditions. Again, the second one is an amended version that came out of Alpine Trails, which is a maintenance agreement that would, at least theoretically, it's maintaining fuels is what it's doing. Okay, while we're reading that, would the applicant's representative or applicant have any thoughts on this particular item?
For the record, Dale McCormick, I don't, I mean, we want it to be safe, we want it to be defensible. We want to work with the Rural Fire District to make sure that we're taking care of public health and safety, and I don't really see, unless Kirk, you had any reaction to that, I don't see this as a negative thing to add that to the covenants, so.
Okay.
Seems okay.
Okay. So the first paragraph would pertain to the covenants specifically?
Well, both would pertain to the covenants. The second one is more work on the ground, a maintenance agreement where folks actually agree to a maintenance regime over time for keeping fuels down. And it might be as simple as keeping lawns watered in a grassland context.
Yeah, absolutely.
So would you do this as a new, new number?
A new condition?
Right, these are both new, would be both new conditions.
And you would do them as two, two conditions? Would you do this as two things, not one?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, I would move both of these as two new conditions.
So they'd probably renumber, but that'd give us a 17 and 18, I guess.
Yes.
Okay.
They would probably, probably become 16 and 17, make 16 and 18.
Correct.
I would second.
Is there any public comment on this amendment? Burt?
Thank you. I greatly appreciate starting to think about future consequences long before you're experiencing them, and we have many places in Grant Creek where it would be really good if these were in place, because the homeowners have not taken these measures, and there will be a price to be paid down the line when Grant Creek has a big fire, which I think is a matter of when and not necessarily of. So I greatly appreciate the amendment and hope it's approved.
Okay, thank you. All right, we've got a motion and a second.
I have a question.
Yes.
Sarah, is it better if we read this?
Sarah, is it better if we read this out loud into the record even though we have it?
Okay, so I guess since I made the motion, I'll go ahead and read it. Covenant language shall include, so I move that covenant language shall include defensible space information appropriate for the subdivision context. Subject to review and approval of Missoula Rural Fire and the county fire inspector prior to final plat approval. The approved section of the covenants may not be altered or eliminated without governing body approval. That is one new condition. Secondly, I would move a new condition that would read, a defensible space maintenance agreement shall be recorded, subject to review and approval by Missoula Rural Fire, the county fire inspector, and caps, prior to final plat approval. It shall comply with Appendix B of the subdivision regulations in Section 3.1.3.5.2 maintenance agreement and shall distinguish between developer responsibilities and those of subdivision homeowners. Subdivision lot defensible space responsibilities shall also be outlined. Adequate defensible space and fuels treatment consistent with the approved maintenance agreement shall be reviewed and approved by Missoula Rural Fire and the county fire inspector prior to issuance of a zoning compliance permit for any form of combustible construction by way of subdivision regulation, Section 3.1.3.5.8.1 to 2 and Appendix B.
I would second if we needed to do it again for sure.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Then, Mr. Chair, I would recommend that we look at the, what is currently number 16 and add an item K and just put defensible space. We said so in the motion here, but these are the pieces of the covenants that can't be changed without commission approval. It seems like it makes sense to have it listed there. So I'd add K, defensible space.
Second.
Good idea. Any discussion or public comment on adding K to reflect what we just passed by way of the two previous conditions? Seeing none. All in favor? Aye.
And then, Mr. Chair, I would recommend that we amend the section, living with wildlife. Which section is that one? So 11, I guess, to reflect the additions made by Fish, Wildlife and Parks that are in the green sheet today. So they basically add to I, they add elk. And then under gardens and fruit trees, they add the section to keep wildlife such as bears out of gardens away from fruit trees, use properly, construct electric fences and maintain these constantly. Contact Fish, Wildlife and Parks for information on all species electric fencing designed to exclude wildlife in gardens and/or home areas. Item, I guess that it wasn't really an I, it was a small one. So we have Roman numeral five is again adding elk and some language. And adding a new one, section on bears. Bears can be attracted to food smells associated with outdoor food storage. Therefore, freezers and refrigerators should not be placed outdoors, on porches or in open garages or buildings. If a freezer or refrigerator must be located outdoors, attempt to secure it against potential bear entry by using a stout chain and padlock around the girth of the freezer. And then the new number nine has added and/or livestock food behind pets. Which is a good idea because I recently saw that there was a bunch of bears hanging out eating some grain spilled over my shoulder and one died, so. So that would be my proposed amendment.
Second.
Any further discussion or comment on this amendment? Seeing none. All in favor? Aye.
Now, Mr. Gentry could ask his question, maybe if you want to.
Mr. Gentry, come on back up and pose your question if you want.
Yeah, my question is, since you guys have all those lots up there, do you have a benefit by paving the road? Or would you rather not have it paved?
I think our contention at this point in time is we don't know what the final disposition of those lots will be. And that could run the gamut from, yeah, we're going to try to develop it as currently platted to the other end of the spectrum that it's entirely possible that we could vacate the subdivision and turn it into open space. So that's why it makes it so difficult at this point in time to know to what extent, if at all, we'd be willing to contribute in the construction of a road that we might ultimately have no use for.
Right, right. Okay, thank you.
So I'm going to take a run at, at this. Talked about this a little earlier. And so I'm going to, I'm going to make a motion to add a condition to require connection to city sewer if prior to building permit issuance, city sewer is available. Maybe there's a better or more elegant way to say that, but in essence, I'm, I'm saying if at some point in time this area of Gentry Estates actually is included in the city sewer service area, wastewater service area, it would seem a shame for these lots not to connect to available city sewer. It's not saying that we're going to require you to hook up to sewer after you've sunk thousands of dollars in septic systems, but if it's available, I would propose that we require that hookup as a condition of approval.
Commissioner, I think it'd be good to have Shannon come and talk a little bit about, because the city-county health codes, and we haven't really had time to read this blue sheet today. I did while you were chairing a meeting.
This meeting?
Yes.
Okay, I see.
So I had time to read while you were chairing. I wasn't paying attention all the time.
Okay.
But the, the codes state that if they're within a sewer main, they're, they need to connect. So I think Shannon can cover that, and I think your bases are covered, but.
Shannon?
That's correct. So the Missoula City County Health Code requires, it is a different requirement than when we look for subdivision review. And, but if this is approved with individual septic systems and the sewer main is available within 200 feet of the property boundaries, they will have to connect. We cannot write a septic permit for that. There are things, you know, there's a, there are things that'll make that less likely to happen. The sewer main, right now where it is, easements are not, there are no easements for any of these lots to connect to that main. We can't require it because it's not in the Missoula wastewater treatment plant service area right now. If it were in the Missoula wastewater treatment plant service area, we would have required that they at the very least have easements if they weren't going to connect, if they didn't meet the requirements to connect. But if sewer is available, as it's defined in the health code at the time that they're developing, it will be connected to city sewer.
Okay, thanks. I'll withdraw my motion then.
And, and the other thing is that if it just becomes in, as part of the Missoula wastewater treatment plant service area, but the main really isn't available to it, they would have to sign a waiver of the option to protest and RSID of bringing a main there eventually, so, in order to get a septic permit. So that, that's another way that we cover that.
Okay, helpful, thank you.
I think the other public health thing that's good is in the future, let's say they, they build and they have septic systems and they've been there a while and someday there is a sewer line available. If their septic failed and that line was close, they would then have to connect to. So I think we have it covered in the health codes.
Okay, very good.
A good idea.
Cola?
Yeah, and I agree, and I, I like to emphasize that when it fails, because it would be completely unfair for someone to put in a $30,000 septic system and then have to pay $10,000 to connect to city sewer if it came a year later. And so that's, to avoid that, it is like upon failure, then they have to connect. So I think that's a safeguard in place.
Oh, okay. Shannon, your hand goes up.
Is that wrong?
Alternate facts?
Alternative.
It, well, it completely depends. I mean, that is, that is one way that it happens. It, it kind of depends if this were to be part of the Missoula wastewater treatment plant service area, which I don't know how that would happen without you asking for it again. But if it did happen, when you sign the waiver, the option to protest, you do have to also agree to connect to city sewer within 180 days of it being available. But again, that's only in areas where the city's already agreed to service the property. Yeah, otherwise it's upon failure.
Thanks, I was mixing two things.
Did you have a question, Mr. Lindler? Come on up to the mic. Bert Lindler, by the way.
Yes, this is Bert Lindler. And I, I just wanted to say that it's my understanding that when the city council made this decision, they were relying very heavily on their growth policy. And so they were certainly concerned that a sewer would encourage dense development. And that's not what was planned up there in the city's growth policy. I don't know what the future holds for this property or for other properties up there. But I, I think your observation that what we're seeing on paper now may not be what we're having up there 20 years from now. And it may take this developer more than a few months or a few years even to bring this to fruition. So if by the time this project does come to fruition, that's, other opportunities for growth have been foreclosed by changes in ownership or easements up there. It, it seems to me the city council, as you indicated, may well step back and, and look differently at this. I personally find it rather difficult to imagine forcing someone to put in a septic field when they have to align it to avoid a sewer line. But that appears to be what might be happening up here. And I, I think it's prescient of you to at least discuss the possibility that by the time this development is built out, there could be changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. McCormick, it looks like you were fidgeting in your seat. Did you want to, okay.
You gave me the opportunity, I'll take it.
Come on, come on up.
Alan McCormick, representing Kirk Gentry. Y'all are in a bit of a bind. And I want to come at this a little different angle than, than John is because I, I understand John's point and I agree with it, that the order that Judge McLean issued deals with the plaintiff specific to that litigation, and it deals with those lots specific to that litigation. And it, it doesn't have a direct bearing on Kirk's problem here. And he's, he's a, he's a victim of the same thing that you're a victim of, to an extent. He's not the one, though, who failed to require the bond and failed to require the, the infrastructure to be put in. He has nothing to do with that. Neither did the three of you sitting there either. So when I say you, I'm referring to the county, not any of you individually. But you've also got an interesting conflict of interest here that bears careful consideration. You are landowners adjacent to this project. And the findings of fact that have been proposed here are that this subdivision meets the rules and regulations of the, of the county. And it, it has some impacts, and those impacts can be appropriately mitigated. That's, that's how you can do conditions of approval, is that you have to first identify the potentially significant adverse impact, and that gives you the authority to mitigate them. And John mentioned a particular statute that says you can require a developer to extend the capital infrastructure. The important part of that is the second half of that statute, which is so long as it's in proportion to the impact that's created by the subdivision itself. And so the, there is a road here. The interpretation is that it's a new road, therefore triggers the air stagnation requirements. And, and that's certainly a legitimate viewpoint, I think, of that, that statute or that ordinance. That ordinance, by the way, does allow for a delay in paving up to two years past. The, I think it's either the occupancy or the construction of the structures or the final plating. I'd have to look at the language again. That's not the point I'm trying to address here. But the issue is that the extension of this roadway here is disproportionate, or the upgrade of the road that's there is disproportionate to the impact that is being created by Mr. Gentry's proposal. And it benefits you because you are a landowner. And you may not know what you want to do with those lots now. You may not ever develop them, you may sell them, you may decide to vacate them and turn it into open space. But nevertheless, the upgrade of that road benefits you as a landowner. And so I caution, the conflict of interest that arises here is that you can condition it a way to where you require him to build the road and put in all of the cost of that infrastructure in a way that benefits you personally as the landowner of these lots. And, and that's a, that's a concern, I think, that you ought to be a little careful with here. Because that's why I say you're in a bind, because you're not just the county commissioners who are overseeing a subdivision review. You're also landowners who stand to benefit from the condition that's being imposed on the developer that's coming before you. And what we're trying to do, and what, and the language that Dale had suggested with that condition number one change, we don't know if that's the perfect solution. But what we're trying, what we're trying to do is engage you in a discussion of saying, given that the infrastructure improvement is disproportionate to the impact, how do we create a mechanism together that allows for Kirk to pay a proportionate share, do some proportionate amount of the work, maybe do all of the work and get paid back at some point? But so, some way that it ends up where we're dealing with a proportionate share issue here and not just a, hey, we're, we don't know what we're going to do with the lots and we don't have a legal obligation to put the road in. Because this, this is an odd situation that is unlikely to come up again. I hope for your sake and as a county taxpayer, for my sake as well, because I'm helping to pay for this too, as we all are. And so I don't know where that conversation quite needs to go. But the reason I took the opportunity to come up here is to, I wanted to point that out and say, we're looking for a way to cooperate with you to make sure that ultimately whatever Kirk has to do to get the subdivision that's otherwise seems to be readily approvable, how do we make sure that that's a fair and equitable sort of treatment? So that if he has to, if the, if his worst-case scenario is that he does have to put all of the infrastructure in himself, how does it make sure that he gets paid back so that he's not funding the disproportionate nature of it? Because although you don't want to, you don't know what you're going to do with the lots, you are directly benefiting from requiring him to do it, which puts you in an even hotter spot.
Commissioner Rowley?
I guess the situation is a bind, but part of the bind is in the timing too. Because as landowners, we aren't benefiting by having a road there until we know that we're going to do something that we need a road there. And so until we determine that there would be a benefit as landowners, again, I'm not sure we would be willing to pay in. Do you see what I'm saying? The timing is important.
I'll disagree with you that the timing is not important. The timing is, is related only to the actual construction of that road. Because once that road goes in and meets, I don't want to say meets county standard because you don't have an off-site road standard, but meets health and safety requirements, meets the air stagnation zone requirements and like, the appraised value of your lots immediately goes up.
Commissioner Curtis?
So we see this off and on, that the furthest person out always develops first. It's just a rule, I swear. And you can't get there from here. But one thing that we have done in Lolo, for example, is we've had a latecomers agreement. So that was for extension of sewer. But I would think that we could do a similar one here, which doesn't guarantee that Mr. Gentry would ever get paid back. But it does allow, you know, you put certain number of years on it, but that if someone else develops beyond, if the county develops, you know, we still haven't, Mr. Denton's property is still involved here, that there could be a latecomers agreement. And I can't remember how we worded those in Lolo, whether it was per lot or how we figured out the value. But there was a way for people to pay back. So it was with the sewer, not a road. But remember the subdivision that you lived in for a while, I think, was the first one that's, he spent sewer all the way from Highway 12 clear out to, for a mile. And then he did get paid back by a few people that developed along the way, so.
John or Tim, any thoughts there? This is new ground for me. I had not heard of this previously.
Yeah, I am just tangentially aware of the latecomer agreement in, in Lolo. But I do recall that, I, I think the Tractor Supply Company, when they, when they went in, they were one that then came back and paid a substantial amount of money. one that then came back and paid a substantial amount of money that went into that, that was returned to whoever paid that, whether it was a district or a developer or what have you. I... As I sit here right now, I don't see any legal impediment to such an agreement.
So how would that play out in the circumstance where, again, we're unsure what the ultimate disposition of these current lots are? I mean, it could range from developing it as currently platted to vacating it and making it open space. How would a latecomers agreement work, given those unknowns?
I don't know. And I don't know to what extent Missoula County can bind parties other than itself and Mr. Gentry. I... Simply because I don't know how the sewer and water latecomers agreement was developed.
Well, I believe that Mr. Gentry would have to pay the upfront. So I just wonder whether it makes sense for us, since this is a new thing that we hadn't thought about. I don't like to write things sitting here. So whether we should delay further so we can look at whether there's a mechanism for such a concept.
So, Tim, what's our deadlines looking like? Do we have to take action today? And if so, would the... Would Mr. Gentry be willing to grant an extension to work on this a little bit more with a date certain that we would come back and take action on the subdivision?
Do we need that? Because, I mean...
It expires Monday.
So we do have a deadline. And also, we don't have to commit to a mechanism for that road right now. We're just saying this road has to be built and we can fight about how it gets paid for later.
The latecomers agreements, I've done them. They're a little easier to do when you have a dead-end road like this, because you can better estimate... Well, you have a good knowledge of who benefits from it. And in reality, the RSID, in a perfect world, works better than a latecomers agreement. We're concerned about that because you do hold the controlling interest in that and can kill it. I think that raises that same conflict of interest issue that I'm raising. The RSIDs are... The reason we're not pushing for the RSID necessarily is partly because of the comments that you've made about maybe we don't want an RSID, maybe we don't want to pay into it. But also, the timing's really unpredictable with those, with the number of hearings you have to go through and the like. And so if we had a partnership with you to do an RSID where we both wanted that outcome to be positive, we'd feel more comfortable about that route of going down that road. Because then we know that the payments are going to be made and we know they're going to be proportional to those benefiting. And this seems like one of the easiest situations, unlike Hillview Way, where you've got properties that are going to benefit equally from them and you know what those are. So I'm not suggesting that we foreclose the discussion on our RSID either. But we may be able to come up with a different agreement. But I think Kirk is certainly willing to grant an extension of time so that we can have a little bit of breathing room here to process it and have some conversations.
What's the commission's...
Would be difficult because it's Fourth of July week, so I think we'd be willing to grant, you know, a couple of weeks, whatever's needed by you.
I guess while we look at that, can I ask a question to John?
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, there are conflicts, and then there are like legal conflicts of interest, you know? And is our interest here as the approving body of a subdivision tied to our interests later down the road as a landowner? I.e., if we approve this subdivision, are we painting ourselves into a corner down the road that we can't... Well, I can't think of the word. You know, where you don't want to do something about the RSID? Oh, my. It's too late in the day.
So does approval of the...
What's it called?
Approval of the subdivision...
I mean, we can't... Protest. Yeah. Protest the RSID later. You know, he's... It seems to me you're implying that that's a conflict of interest, that if we approve this, we're giving tacit approval for putting in this road. And I want to be very clear that I don't think we're doing that and I don't want us to approve this if later you're going to... If it's going to come back later that, well, you have to be a part of this RSID or we're going to sue you because you approved the subdivision with us thinking that you were going to participate.
It's a little more indirect than that. The concern that I think you ought to have is what role are you doing here? If you're concerned that approving this subdivision might put you in a bind for doing something as a landowner, that is a direct conflict. That is... Because that is a... You're making a decision on something based on, not the subdivision criteria itself, but how it's affecting you as a landowner, you know, Missoula County and owning those lots. So it is a concern. And I'm not trying to paint you into a corner. I'm trying to explain why there is a reason to cooperate here that's beyond the order that Judge McLean issued and that you are in a bind. And I don't mean a "we're going to sue you" bind. I mean, this is weird. This is odd and kind of unprecedented.
Yeah. And so I guess that you're... We couldn't... You're right, we couldn't deny the subdivision because we own land and don't want to participate in an RSID. But if we approve the subdivision, we still have a right as a landowner later to protest an RSID. Is that correct, John?
That's correct. That's correct. You still have a legal right under the statute to protest creation of an RSID. What Alan's pointing out is, you know, a different consideration than the statutory legal consideration that I've been providing to you.
So I guess the question before us is, will requesting an extension really result in anything approaching what the property owner would like, given the case that I certainly am not willing to commit a dime of money towards, at this juncture, towards completion of this road, not knowing what the ultimate disposition of Glen Eagle will be?
Because the other question is, I mean, if we're willing to look at the latecomer and try to figure it out, does it even need to be in the conditions? Could it just be something that we say we're happy to try and figure out? Because he's going to have to get the road approved and stuff through Public Works anyway. So I'm not sure that we had those conditions in subdivisions before, but I can't remember. I mean, Tim could look at... What was the name of that subdivision you lived in, Cola? Blue something? Stella Blue?
Yeah, that's the road. It's the Lolo Creek Trails subdivision.
Tim, does this ring a bell?
The latecomers agreement? It does not.
I mean, because the other thing is, is if you look... I'm guessing that all these other people's gentry on their name are related. So, I mean, there's benefit... There's more benefit to your family, too, for going beyond. So they'd be tied into this latecomers agreement if that develops further.
I guess for me, like, the mechanism that this road gets built by doesn't affect the approval of the subdivision, as long as it's conditioned that the road has to be there. The only thing I could think of is if it's beneficial to the applicants, if they think it's going to take a really long time to work this out and they'd rather than not get it approved so quickly to give themselves more time, you know, since they're only good for a certain amount of time. But I think on our end, the mechanism isn't important. It's just the fact that we're saying you have to do it somehow.
Mr. Gentry, coming up to the mic for...
Question.
And sorry, just so we get you on the recording, if you could speak into the mic.
Kirk Gentry, for the record, do any of your lots touch my lots up there?
I'm getting a head nod "yes" from Erica.
Because I know you don't want to put a dime in towards them, but if we were able to pay for the road, would there be any chance of us maybe getting a lot in lieu of that so you didn't have to come up with any money?
Well, I guess that's not quite the point, is that we're not sure what the final disposition of any of those lots will be at this point in time.
I'm not even sure what the lot lines look like.
Well, if that's the case, then you're probably not going to let me do anything. So, you know, if we've... If I say I'll pave it all, even though I can't afford to do that, you know, are we looking at approval if I said yes to doing that, even though that's cost prohibitive?
Well, yeah, we can approve it with the conditions, which says you'll pave the road, do the road. But we're just trying to decide whether it makes sense for us to try and work out the ability for you to get paid back in the future by other folks who benefit from the road, which could be county lots if we decide to go that way.
Okay. All right. Well, there's something to think about.
No, we get that. Thank you. Well, are we ready to just move forward?
Does the applicant have a preference? Would you rather that we move forward or delay?
And Sarah, while they're conversing a little... Looks like we have a meeting on July 12th and one on the 26th. Are those pretty full already? All right. That's the budget. The 12th, you remember? Okay.
You're not going to be here. Okay.
You're not going to be here on the 12th.
I guess relative to the question about a delay, I mean, we haven't... We've talked about the road issues, which we know there'd be a lot of discussion about, but we haven't even really begun the discussion of if there is to be discussion of the building envelope and that, so...
I would take no discussion on our part as indication that we're not discussing it. I mean, unless one of the commissioners wishes to amend it, I do not have any interest in amending that.
Yeah, we just hadn't got... I was going in order. We haven't gotten to that one yet. But I guess if we want to discuss it really briefly, I see your point that you're going above and beyond what would be required if it were a rural cluster and that you think that that requirement is too much. You know, and I think that's, on one hand, a valid point. And on the other hand, I think that the reason staff chose it was not within the constraints of any sort of regulatory things, but the fact that it's such an important wildlife habitat and more of a mitigation of the wildlife habitat. Is that correct, Tim?
Yeah, that's correct.
So... And I think that's legitimate as well, since we know this is such an important wildlife habitat area, that it is legitimate to put more stringent restraints on it than would be required by certain regulations based on mitigating factors.
Yeah. Likewise, I would concur from a resource standpoint, wildlife standpoint, the elevational delineation of building envelope and/or no-build zone seems appropriate.
Tim, can you remind me which number, or maybe you can, Dale, since you're standing there, which number was the county looking at? Was it 3780?
Yeah. And that was going to be my question for Tim, is what's the magic number there? And is there some compromise? Because to me, that 1778 contour, especially in absence of a letter from Fish, Wildlife and Parks, there hasn't really been a discussion about the wildlife and, you know, specific comments from Fish, Wildlife and Parks or maps. We recognize that that ridge... One of the ideas with that lot was that that would be a good building site. And how far out on that ridge, we understand why that is a concern. But I think another thing to point out, on Tim's map, the blue rectangle is not 50 feet off of the building envelope, so it actually need to be pushed, you know, 50 feet.
Tim?
Well, I think what Dale's driving at is it might have to be pushed 50 feet off the backside of the envelope. It could go right up to 3778, because that's not a rear lot line. It's just a building envelope.
Okay. I see what you're correcting. So, yeah, I guess my question would just be, you know, if there's the potential for any sort of compromise that doesn't make it 75% of the... You know, it goes back to this idea of if the county adopts regulations that say, as an incentive to get reduced side yard setbacks, if you do this thing, you can, as an incentive, will provide you a means to get there and have reduced side yard setbacks. So we have the hardship of having to deal with the 50-foot setback. And, you know, it just seems like... If you're going to adopt regulations, it seems like they should be applied or revised because it just sends... I don't think it sends a real good message to the development community to provide these incentives and say, oh, you know, you tried, but you didn't get it right, so...
But you weren't developing under that section of the regulations. Is that correct?
Right. Because we found a solution with retaining the 50-foot setbacks. But it's going far beyond what your zoning ordinance would allow. So it's just sort of disappointing in a way. And I wish there was some sort of compromise, like 1774 or something, or closer to 12 acres, but less than three acres, 25% of what that zoning regulation would allow, seems excessive.
Tim, do you have any thoughts?
Because I can see that by looking at the contours, that little point that sticks down there, because the lines are further apart, means it's flatter, right? So you're going to have less cut and fill and such like that, if you could build on the contours. So could a compromise be 3768 or 3770?
Well, the 770 does then follow all the way down to their point.
Which I think further fragments the entire lot.
What about 3774?
Right. That's what I'd suggest, there'd be a compromise.
Yeah. Because that's kind of two contour lines up from where their 8.05 acres hits.
Tim, do you have anything to say as far as the elevation that's prescribed here in rationale versus extending it further?
I think there remains some flexibility, even with the staff recommendation. But I understand, having walked it, as you walk further to the south and west, it flattens out and there's definitely more... It seems like a place where you'd put a house. But the challenge that we face is that I think the further you put it on the flatter ground there, the more you fragment and you reduce the value of the, and I'm going to use the word, even though it might not be entirely appropriate, cluster on lots one through four. And when you walk that ridge, another thing that you notice is that you get more into the native grasses and cover, and there's elk scat down there. So there's a certain subjectivity when you make these recommendations, but having walked that ground, the further south and west that you go, the more natural it is and less impacted. As you go further up that ridge toward the other four lots, you're getting into more invasive weeds, you're closer to the other building envelopes. It just made more sense.
So I guess to use my argument that I used against them, against us, they didn't do a cluster development. And so granted, we want them to cluster it because it's better for the resource management, but I don't think it's really fair to necessarily use the cluster argument when they aren't proposing a cluster development.
Dale?
I guess I don't follow the logic there because this goes exactly along the same lines of land protection as the cluster development standards in the zoning regulations, without allowing the reduction of the side yard setbacks.
And I guess what I... My response is, under the Subdivision and Plating Acts, since we have such important ground here for elk habitat, we're looking at a different part of state statute. We're looking at reducing and mitigating impacts to natural environment, wildlife and wildlife habitat. And it could be that a rural open space cluster wouldn't have been enough to do that.
Yeah, I think that's exactly what I was going to add in, is that the facts on the ground, the vegetation type, the use of wildlife on this very specific parcel may warrant mitigations that ultimately end up making it look like a cluster development of some sort. But it's intended, I mean, it's addressing what's on the ground there and trying to lessen the impacts. So we still don't have a motion yet. Tim?
So commissioners, I understand in the spirit of compromise, a possibility is to cite a... So, commissioners, I understand in the spirit of compromise, a possibility is to cite a different number instead of 3778. And I understand that and it's just something that's worthy of consideration, I guess. I think we would stick with our recommendation, but, but I understand where Dale's coming from. I think it, and his building envelope does something slight, slightly different, but it gets at the same thing, cause I think the prime area to build is gonna be on that ridge. So, I understand if that number changes in the spirit of compromise.
So, my official pen measuring device says that if we use 3774, that they would still be 200 feet away from the property line. So, it's still a pretty good buffer for the elk to move, plus, you know, right below it is allied wasteland that's already conserved. So, I'd be willing to amend whatever condition that was.
Tim, can you enlarge the image on our screen here so that we could all see precisely the contour lines?
And it's also when we were packing up this big map.
Okay. Just so everyone can.
It gets a little bit grainy since it was copied multiple times, but I think.
From that little point, then it ends up being one, two, two lines down. Yeah, so there.
Was that a motion?
Yeah, so I'd move to amend condition number three to change the elevation number to 3774.
And that would be amenable to the applicants?
Yes, that would be acceptable.
Then I'll second that motion.
Okay, any further discussion? I guess I remain on, ah, public comment. Come on up.
I would just like to thank the developer for making such a compromise offer. And, I'd like to thank the commission for considering it. And, you know, I think we had a, a really protective envelope. I think the envelope as amended will also be protective. And, I do in the end want to see the opportunity for development honored here. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion?
I guess I have one.
Yes, Commissioner Rowley.
Sorry. Is it such like a skinny, pointy area that that wouldn't really help anybody build a house there? Like, do we wanna, I don't know?
Move it down one more?
Or widen it? Like, not necessarily have to follow the contour exactly if you can't fit a house there?
Mr. McCormick.
So, what we did with the exhibit that I printed out 11 by 17 for you, that shows our proposed. So, we kind of approximated, we went to 3770 and then brought it kind of back up to where it was closer to staff's recommendation. And, the idea what they're, at the request of staff, was to have a distance and bearing because to actually survey the, the contour becomes sort of a surveying nightmare. So, to have a distance and bearing. So, what I would envision is that we would just take the point of that and move it up slope to 3774.
So, you'd go to here and here?
Yep.
See how I drew that?
That, that the, the rest of it would remain the same, but that the point would move four feet up the slope.
So, take the point of 37, 3774 and draw a line out to where you had drawn your line?
Yeah, it almost ends up being a 90.
Okay. Cause that gives a lot, a much wider building space. Although it makes it way, way, way bigger. Then is that what we want either?
Well, I, I have mixed feelings on that since we're incrementally, I guess undermining some of what we're trying to accomplish in the first place, in which case, why not just take it all the way to the end of the southern property line?
What about the tip of the point of the next line up and out? Well, and it's just basically like a rectangle then. And then, like, instead of 3774, go 76 to the point of that and then draw out to the side landline and up to here? I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, the difficulty here is without any photographs, without it being out there on the ground, I'm just totally speculating what this might actually play out like, both in terms of developability, which I think we don't want to just extend some lines here that ultimately can't be built upon, and also in terms of impacts on the ground.
I guess maybe, maybe we should postpone and they can come back with some sort of.
Different drawing?
Yeah. And then we were saying that makes it a really large area still for our preference. But, but I guess in the interest of time, would we wanna?
Well, I mean, so this, this would be another possibility if, if, rather than just totally whipping out lines on the fly here, would, would we be amenable to postponing till July 12th and having something?
Both that road agreement and, and a different drawing here that maybe Tim has time to look on the ground.
Yeah, maybe I could work with Tim to come up with a revised exhibit that meets some of the concerns they have.
And we, yeah, well, I mean, we really are looking for reasonable compromise here. It's not just needless delay. And I would feel worse if we put something together on the fly that ultimately doesn't work for anyone than waiting a couple of weeks if that works for Mr. Gentry.
Well, in that case, I would move, I would move that we recess this hearing, reconvene on July 12th and put this to the front of the agenda or closer to the front of the agenda if possible. And that at that time, the two things we'd be considering is Lot 5 and the road agreement. Something else might come up, but, or latecomer agreement.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion in a second to postpone to recess until July 12th. Working on those couple of items. All in favor? Okay, thanks everyone for sticking with us for multiple hours.
And Tim, could you make sure you find the, that latecomers agreement from Lolo Trail subdivision just as an example to maybe forward to Mr. McCormick, the two Mr. McCormicks? And then, and John, so that maybe the commission also, just so we can all kind of think about it.
Okay, any other business come before the commission today? Seeing none, we will be in recess.